So I'd like to call this study session of the Lakewood City Council for Monday, January 14th to order. Break with normal protocol. A moment of silence on January 12th. Air Force Colonel Retired Joe Jackson Medal of Honor recipient, 95 years old and resident of this house now and passed away. Colonel Jackson was an honored guest at our redeployment parade. I had the honor of being his guide to try to find General Harrison because of his failing vision. He was still active and coming out and participating in community events. He was a legendary aviator. He flew a, if you know anything about landing and taking a plane off, you have to land into the wind and take off into the wind. In spite of that and the fact that three quarters of an airfield had been taken over by North Vietnamese and Viet Cong forces in the Tet Offensive, he volunteered for a mission. Where he landed a C-123 in the corner of an airfield to rescue three Air Force Combat Controllers who were stranded in an abandoned special forces base. It was taking unrelenting fire from both small arms, rocket propelled grenades and artillery. He turned the plane or flew it in. He actually spun, picked the people up, took off again into the fire and saved those lives. In honor of Colonel Jackson, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, first item for discussion is a review of the 2019 Citizen Advisory Board's Committees and Commission Work Plans. And first up is Ms. Dodsworth.
Thank you. Good evening. I have five different advisory boards that we support. And so I thought I would just start with Arts Commission and go through if that's okay. So the first board is the Arts Commission. And that group has met and kind of tightened up their work program. They focus on the MLK event. They're very involved with that with the essay contest and other elements of that program. And then of course, they're working on the rotating art exhibit. Just this month, they were contacted to support the Colonial Plaza project to look at the public art there, possibly working with the Nisqually Tribe. So they're going to kind of put that to the top of the list and work with community development on that to do an RFP and assess how that product could come into that site. They're going to be overseeing the outdoor concert series, selecting the bands and putting that program together. As we talked about during the budget, it'll be kind of a six to eight week session, including some youth or family related events that go with it as far as we can stretch our budget and look for additional sponsorship. Summer Fest is a big activity and they come out and our passport to art is a big part of that. We have many, many partners and so people, children and families can go from station to station and activity area and they get their little passport stamped and they get to have a lot of fun with that. And then of course, the holiday events, very successful. They'll continue to work on that holiday event that we had, that we'll be having in December. It'll be the first Saturday in December and we'll be combining all of those things and just learning lessons from this year and making it even bigger and better event, so. Any questions on that work program?
Mr. Brensitter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every so often when we discuss public arts and we're looking for the Arts Commission to take a role in some of the public art funding, financing initiatives. That's never particularly gotten traction over the past seven or eight years. They do an excellent job at the other aspects of identifying art, planning for art, being able to go and do that. But they've never really gotten into the situation of where significantly improvements in public art require funding and while the council has a funding stream that is not robust, but at least is consistent. Okay, you know, and I remember when I came on the council and there wasn't even that. But, you know, other than speaking about some things over there, but for the larger fundraising of public art, you know, I see it's not on their work plan as a topic that they're interested in again this year. And, you know, are our expectations for the Arts Commission to play a role in that misplaced? Or what kind of conversations have they had regarding them directing that? Maybe the deputy mayor could speak to that more so.
Mr. Whalen.
The short answer is it has not been directed to them to take a look at that. I don't think we have had any sense of consensus direction for them to do that. Years ago, and I've been doing this 10 years or nine years, I run the Arts Commission. Years ago, they had a group and it changes every couple of years that was trying to model a 501(c)(3) process after other cities like the city of Spokane Valley and others who have a pretty robust arts program with a separate entity, a 501(c)(3) that's out there for exactly that purpose. And I think they had some fits and starts getting that together. Part of it was funding to even get the 501(c)(3) application done because it takes a little legal work and someone who's skilled with the IRS application to do that. And so that fell off the wayside. So if it's something that we would like them to pick up, I think that they would probably be interested in doing it as long as they had some clear guidance and perhaps more budget. With $2,000 that we've allocated to them, that doesn't scratch the surface on getting that even remotely off the ground.
And to follow up on that, they have talked about, they are talking more about public art because there is kind of a new group of folks that weren't really involved with the last process. So I think you have a really a dynamic group that is interested in public art. And I do believe there is a conversation coming forward. I think it was going to be a little bit later, but it, public art is moving to the top because of the Colonial Plaza project. So they are interested in looking at different funding sources. There's lots of different resources they can go to where you didn't need to be a 501(c)(3). The city can hold those resources for us in the art fund. And they, there are members on the Arts Commission that are very capable of researching and possibly helping to apply for grants, but staff would probably take a role in that as well. So they, if council provides that direction, they certainly can go in that direction. They were looking more at the facilitating an RFP process and recommendation to council. But if there's an additional, oftentimes you don't really ask for funds until you know what you're asking them for. So maybe as they get closer to looking at an option, then they would look at those different grant fundings. Washington State Arts Commission has a grant program. Pierce County, I think Arts Commission has a grant program. So there's some local ones that we could look for that we'd probably be eligible for and be maybe competitive with. We've been pretty good at that and so if that's your direction, we're happy to assess that and see how we can fit it in the work program.
I think that's a good point is to let them go through that public art process for the RFP. And then we talked a little bit last time at council comments that if we had some thoughts or theories or themes or concepts we wanted to float to them for consideration as they put together the RFP, we should do that. And then arising out of that project, if there is a budget that they're getting feedback from the artists for purposes of consideration of the RFP, then they probably will have to go out and get funding with some sponsorships or some grant opportunities.
Well, I think-
It's kind of a chicken and the egg thing a little bit, yeah.
I do think that at the time that we have our joint meeting with the Arts Commission, that the long-term plan and strategy for funding and getting a more robust presence of public art, given that we've got the downtown area plan, that it includes the creation of spaces of where public art would really be appropriate. And not to say that I think we want to advocate our role in it, but I think that we do need to have a discussion about their advice, about the long-term piece to do that. I mean, the amount of time that it took us to move forward to getting the Lotus Blossom. And while I like the outcome of that, I wouldn't want to do one piece every eight years. So, you know, and, you know, this is a group that I would certainly like them to have discussions about it. Not necessarily say they have to actually implement something this year, but I think come to us so that we can jointly have a discussion so that maybe to the extent that that would influence the 2021, 2022 city budget and plan would be worthwhile to start having those discussions. And this plan that's here on the work plan and it's because of all the ones that we were getting, it doesn't tell me the month that we're going to have the joint meeting.
We were just checking that. Did I check the master schedule for the Arts Commission joint meeting? It is on most of these, but I think it was left off this.
Mr. Polk.
I was just going to say if public art options could be a theme or a conversation point during that joint meeting, we'd be happy to prepare for that. October 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of questions, one or a comment first on the public art piece for the motor ab. I believed it was a council intention although I was not at the meeting with the Nisqually Tribe, but the Nisqually's were going to be brought into this discussion.
We didn't make the application grant award this time, but they've encouraged us to apply in next year.
Okay, so are we just doing a grant or are we just wanting money from them? Or I thought we were asking them to actually like talk about the art. So we need to do that in an early day rather than kind of set out an RFP process. I mean, that would be my advice, not to start the RFP process and then call them up and say, oh, by the way, we're... I think the way they've sold it, the way I understand it is this is, they're involved. I mean, this really is-
There's a stakeholder, there's a stakeholder group being put together and they're a part of that stakeholder. They've been invited to be a part of that stakeholder meeting already. And I think the idea is to have that secured within the next two weeks because there is a tight timeframe for the Colonial Plaza project. But there'd be a stakeholders group that came together prior to doing the RFP and they would be included in that.
And then my next question is the rotating art, which is very cool out here. How do you publicize that? How do you find artists for that?
I think that they publicize through various lists and it's through the, I think, Pierce County Arts Commission and people that have, there's a Lakewood Artist Group and through the library and they have a resource list. And then all of the different Arts Commission members actually nominate folks to participate based on their expertise or their connections. And so it's kind of an ever-growing list. And or somebody sees something somewhere and they think, oh, that'd be really cool. So then they jot down, so it's kind of this evolving process like the-
Do you have problems finding people or is there a waiting list of people?
No, they usually have it set out for several quarters in advance as to who's going to do it, so.
Anything further from Ms. Dodsworth? Thank you.
Okay, so the next on the list, I think, is, what do you have next on there?
Chief Zarro?
I beg your pardon?
Oh, no, you're-
Community Services Advisory Board. All right. So this Community Services Advisory Board, they just completed a large process. So you'll see at the end of this month that they'll be doing the review of the human services contracts that you approved, grants that you approved. Earlier in the year, the board supports the CDBG program, looking at the annual action plan. And so they work with the CDBG department staff in reviewing those documents and making sure that they're up to date and that they forward those recommendations to you. So those are kind of their two big things is the human services grant process and then the CDBG requirements for our funding.
Questions? Next leg?
I beg your pardon?
Next leg?
Next one, yes, is I have Liquid's Promise as the next one. I'm not sure if that's yours, but Liquid's Promise. So we are in the process of hiring a new staff person to provide support to Liquid's Promise. And so that's occurring as we go. But they have a great work program this year. They're looking at their strategic plan and making sure that they're keeping up with those items, that it was a three-year plan. They're sure they're going to be working on the memorandum of understanding. And that is, there's a lot of new people in our organizations and our community. And so we want to make sure that they are aware of Liquid's Promise and how they can be supportive to that process and how we know that with all the collaboration in the community, we can make our kids successful. So we'll be looking at the current MOU and bringing those ideas back to council with changes, potential changes, and then looking at who the new partners are. It's a great tool again to introduce the program and how Lakewood works and how we all collaborate. So we'll be working on that. They are working very closely with the Youth Council and the Youth Summit. And so they are providing mentorship, whether it's members of that board or people within their organizations, to provide mentorship for the different elements of the Youth Summit. In fact, there's a meeting tonight at the Boys and Girls Club. And so, and that's very exciting because they're helping with the logistics and the marketing and finding the speakers. And so giving those kids a real support system so it can be a really successful event. And so we're excited about that. We are working on gathering more data. Council requested that this year. And so we're looking at collecting data in various ways from different agencies so that we can see that our efforts are effective. And then assessing the WhatsApp newsletter, how we might change the distribution of that, how we might look at the effectiveness of that tool as well.
Ms. Moss.
Just as a liaison for the Promise Board, I just wanted to let them know that they are looking at possibly renaming the Youth Summit to something different, giving it a different title. So they're going to be reviewing that to see if they can-
Yeah, tonight, yeah, tonight they're going to be talking about if they go with a theme, if they get- You know, we've been calling it the Youth Summit, the Youth Summit. And so the kids are going to be taking a look at, should we have a theme or a catchy name or some way to help with the branding and marketing? So they'll be talking about that as well as all the other elements. Kind of structuring out the format so that everybody knows how it's going to work. Is it small set, is it a big group, small sessions, break, resource, small sessions? Is it big session, big session? You know, so they're just finalizing those today.
You know, I think being supportive of the Youth Council and their vision and planning for a summit is good. I think we don't want some of our groups to get involved to the point of where they're taking it over. You know, and so while there are suggestions and everybody would like to be able to go and do that, I would keep them at the suggestion level and allow the decision level to stay with the Youth Council to be able to go through and do that. Because while I don't think the Youth Council will shut down, I think, I think that, you know, that if they sense a loss of control, they'll become, begin to see their role as more secondary instead of primary. And I think we want to encourage them. I went by the Boys and Girls Club at six o'clock. There were about a dozen Youth Council members there that were discussing this topic in their small little groups about how they were doing it. They seem to be so energized being able to go and do that. And, you know, and I certainly want to let it be as successful as they make it and for them to own it, to do that, you know, we don't have to interject ourselves to make it more perfect.
Other questions on this one?
The next one I have is Park and Rec Advisory Board. Page 11, thank you. And so the Park and Rec Advisory Board has a very aggressive schedule this year. We have a lot of master plans coming up this year to help us be prepared for the next RCO grant cycle. They'll be chatting about the Edgewater Park master plan ideas. We're certainly working on the Harry Todd Waterfront Project. That, as you know, we combined the two, phase one and phase two, phase two together because we were quite successful in our grants funding. So the permitting and design is happening. Final design's going to look a bit different than the master plan, so it'll come back to the park board for review. But anyway, they're going to be working with staff on a legacy plan update. That's not due for two years, but we're going to start the process this year, so we're ready for next year. Another item they'll be reviewing once council and the school board gives us direction is the Clover Park School District Cooperative Use Agreement, which is really just memorializing the activities and actions and agreements and best practices we do now. But it's just to put it into a little bit more of a formal document again so that as you get new superintendents, new principals, the new changes, everybody's on the same page. You don't have to start over. And then there'll be some park code updates as we do every year when we find out that something needs to be modified or changed or included, so.
Questions?
And last but not least, I have the Youth Council. This document looks a little bit different than the other ones just because they've shown you kind of, their school year is their advisory board year, so to speak. And so we have some 2018 activities. If you flip it over, you're working on 2019, which is primarily Youth Summit. That's really all of their energy and meetings and extra meetings are going into that. They are taking all the leadership and they are very excited about it. And it's exciting to see them so excited. And it's exciting to see these different mentors coming together to help them just because they know they want to do some things on mental health. And then they're going to the experts to help bring in, you know, what are the topics? They get to decide, is it bullying? Is it suicide prevention? Is it, you know, what are the things they're interested in? So anyway, that's very exciting. And that's really their primary meeting.
I'm excited that you're excited that they're excited.
Yeah, and you're going to be excited. And there'll be a role for council to be involved with this as well. And so we'll make sure that you understand that as well or ask you to participate. But I can see you're all very excited too. Very really good.
Any other questions for Ms. Dodsworth?
Thank you.
You're released. We now have Chief Zarro, I saw around her earlier, to review the Public Safety Advisory Committee work plan.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, council members. Let me get to my right page here, apologize, I've lost it. So the, the little bit of a struggle to gather a work plan for this coming year. And you'll see there is a typo, it says 2018. That is just a typo. This is the 2019 work plan. It includes adult family homes, which is mostly an evaluation of safety issues surrounding adult family homes, general traffic safety, and then methods or ways that they can energize their neighborhood associations and get them more involved in public safety issues throughout the city. Yes, Mr. Whalen.
You know, we get periodically quite a bit of feedback on the issue of fireworks in the city. And since the work plan looks a little light, it might be worth having them include that on their work plan. You know, the challenge is we can't pretend to think that something's going to happen before July 4th this year. But at least if it's on the work plan and they perhaps have an opportunity to get some public input on it, they might have a holistic approach. We think we've made decisions over the years for the best interest, but there's still a lot of feedback from the public on this issue. It might be worth having them chew on it.
I agree.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. Moving right along, Ms. Kraus, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The work plan before you is similar to past years. We'll have the Joint Advisory Board Committee meeting in July. In August, we'll have the lodging applications out. We'll present those or have them available to the Lodging Tax in mid-September with the retreat at the end of September and then recommendations to the City Council in November. And that's our work plan.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions? What? Statutorily required. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Buerer. Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board first. Topic that's been around for a while.
Very briefly, a council member, John Simpson, is liaison. And the purpose of the board is to preserve, protect and promote the unique heritage and historic resources of the city of Lakewood. Some of their accomplishments in 2018 include recruiting new members to the board, obtaining a landmark designation for the Woodbrook Hunt Club. And another item that they worked on is reconnaissance level survey for the Oak Park Neighborhood, which was established during World War II and had some unique construction standards. They've also reached out to other jurisdictions to learn more about recognizing Lakewood historic streets. And along the way, I found out how the name of Custer Road came about. And that was because at one point in time, there was a town that was supposed to be established in that area called the Town of Custer, believe it or not. So that's what came out of some of that information. So that's what they've been working on and that I think will continue into 2019. The work plan includes exploring the designation of hardscaping, which- of hardscaping, which is, are there certain pieces of infrastructure, roads, bridges, and things like that that are worthy of a historic designation, but need to be careful on that because I'm not sure it's a good idea to recognize the interlocking bridge as historic in the event that there's some damage in the future.
Well, the caution tape has been on there for months. If it stays on there much longer, it might become historic.
Is it still historic, could it's a fishing?
There is supposed to be a fix on that, I think, by February. They've also looked at, and they will continue to look at, landmark designations for various properties in the city of Lakewood, one of which is the Colonial Center. You may also be seeing Colonial Plaza being designated as a historical street in addition to being a complete street. And also on page nine, you have a, a schedule of work to be done for the reconnaissance survey of the Oak Park Neighborhood. And that's when they'll be looking at each individual property, and there's a process that they go through. There's various forms that they fill out. They look at 13 different descriptors, and they will prepare a digital report, and then make a determination of whether or not this is something that the city was just to take a look forward in the future. When you're done, this is a historic inventory list of all properties in the city of Lakewood. This was done in 1999. This one will be done specifically for the Oak Park Neighborhood and will digitize everything so people can see the photographs. Pardon me? All properties. Every single property in the city of Lakewood. This is kind of a big deal. People feel, are not even sure that it even exists, but it's in a special place in the Community Economic Development Department that we go to from time to time. And just as by way of information, we've also designated each one of these properties on our GIS system and permitting system. So if it comes up for permits or something, we can at least talk to the owner and let them know, did you know, and are you interested in wanting to preserve this property for historic purposes in the future? I'm getting off on tangents. I apologize, but I thought you'd find it interesting. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Any questions regarding the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board? Mr. Brandstetter?
The one element of, of the work plan, they explore the use of the community landmark designation for the laundry list of locations. And I, I would think that, that for this year, I'd like this board to take Western State Hospital off of their list in terms of what they're looking to do to, as far as historic designations, because there is, there are a lot of moving parts around that property and our relationship with that property, the Planning Commission, and we, we are gonna have before us an idea as to whether we want to do some, some zonings of some of, of that property, and DSHS is involved with a, a master planning and things to do that. And I think it would be better for the Landmark Board to wait to be exploring historical designations of what's, of that property once some of the dust settles. And so we explore the rest of those, but not have Western State Hospital on their list this year. To do that, just because I don't want to do something that's contrary to what else we'd like to see happen or that creates a unintended impediment to getting a result that we want.
I don't disagree, I disagree with Mr. Brandstetter's comments, but this was on their list, so I felt obligated to bring it forward. We can certainly make that change. I'm sure they'll be fine-
Yeah, but if that could not be on there when it goes back for us to approve in a week, that would be-
I just, I just want to point out, though, that the board does not have a specific guideline. And it says right here, for the completion of the following work plans, since this board is often dependent upon, so whether or not the name is there or not is in many ways irrelevant, simply because there are, as you mentioned, so many moving parts, and there's a lot of dust in the air that I doubt that they're gonna get around to making any kind of recommendation concerning Western State. I just want to say that because I sit in those meetings and I know what they face, and, yes, it's robust, but I'm, I think that's why it is there in the first place.
All right, move to Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission, seven members. The council liaison is Mr. Brandstetter. They had quite a list of accomplishments in 2018. I would suggest to you that the downtown plan was probably one of their bigger accomplishments. And they also did some changes to the zoning code relative to motor vehicle sales, and they did make recommendations on the 2019 comprehensive plan docket. Turning the page, they have a very aggressive plan for 2019. Includes the revised shoreline master plan, quasi judicial municipal code amendments, which are coming up this week. They review the six-year transportation improvement plan prior to it coming to the council. We are in the midst of Title 18A update. We've held a series of focus group meetings last week. We'll report out that to the commission this Wednesday evening. They have a list of about 13 2019 comprehensive plan amendments, some of which will be controversial. They will be reviewing the Buildable Lands Report, then they will take on the 2020 comprehensive plan docket, and then they're going to review the Buildable Lands Report in relationship to the current residential densities throughout the city of Lakewood and making recommendations to the City Council. What is not on this list at this time is proposed zone code amendments to the Pierce County Golf Course. That was a topic that came up last week in a staff meeting. You did receive some information in a city manager's update today. This is coming back to the council in February for your consideration. If you decide to do that, then we will move it forward and place it on the work plan.
I didn't read the city manager's report today. I was in meetings all day before I came here. What, what did he report?
He, I'll, I'll speak in his behalf, and he can interrupt me at any point. We had some discussions about the future of Western State Hospital, and as a part of that, the discussions also focused on their potential use of that property for redevelopment of the hospital. In addition, we have an existing golf course. It's no longer in operation as Zone OSR2. And is it more appropriate that it be OSR1, which is more representative of the zoning specific to Fort Stilicon Park, or, for example, along Chambers Creek? So it's a more restrictive zoning designation. There are reasons to do it, in, in part because of the amount of woodlands in the area as well as some longstanding water uses. Property may also belong to DNR. I'm not sure about that. So we're gonna need to be doing the research, and we would be coming back and giving some information on that in February.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. This is, this is quite a, a list.
It is. Any questions for Ms. Buer- Mr. Buer regarding the Planning Commission work plan?
Yes, I have plenty to do.
Thank you. So, stay put, because your next step on the review of the multifamily tax exemption application regarding Lake Grove and 99th Streets. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, we, we didn't receive a, a work plan for salary commission that is supposed to meet this year.
Is it this year?
Every fourth odd number year, you know, while there isn't an actual membership of a salary commission, that I was wondering if there is a, say, timeline for that work that's supposed to be done this year.
Mr. Caulfield?
We plan on bringing that, we plan on bringing that back to the council in, in May, along with a, a process like we did four years ago. Look for that probably in a study session in May.
So, can you refresh our recollection? Is the, the four-year provision codified? I believe it was. And is it, is it hap- is it, is the four-year provision codified in a way that it happens automatically or it has to be initiated?
It's set up that it's supposed to happen every fourth year from the first year we did it, but that membership doesn't persist beyond the one time. So in order to make it happen, you have to recruit and appoint a new salary commission to do that.
All right. We'll move to multifamily tax exemption.
Okay, this particular item begins on page 18 of your packet. I'm going to go on a brief review of this. The city has received a multifamily tax exemption application for roughly the 6,000 blocks of Lake Grove Street and 99th Street. So you have two buildings facing Lake Grove and two buildings facing 99th. This property was at one time part, part of a dangerous building abatement where we initiated some level of action on it to remove existing structures. The owner then took responsibility for it and removed them as, in the end, but we have incurred some costs and we are requesting payment of our funds. This is a 1.42 acre site with 60 multifamily units. Multifamily tax exemption is a program which provides a tax exemption on new multifamily buildings if located within residential target area. There's two types of exemptions. There's an eight-year and a 12-year exemption. If you're proposing a 12-year exemption, 20% of the total number of units have to be set aside as rent restricted for a period of the 12 years. And that means you cannot raise them at a market rate. They stay at a lower rate for that period of time, and there's also reporting requirements to that effect. In this particular case, this property is located in the Central Business District RTA. Applicants are Steve Mackey and Michael Campion. They are requesting a 12-year exemption, which means of the 60 units, 12 units would be set aside as rent restricted. The owner of the property is Lake Grove Properties LLC. It is a part of the application. They've indicated that this is a holding company. The purpose of this presentation this evening is to give the council the opportunity to review the proposal and provide comments to the department regarding this, this project. It does have some unique aspects, that being the applicant filed the multifamily tax exemption as well as land use permits prior to the approval of the downtown subarea plan. The act, council took action October 1st, and the ordinance became effective November 1st. His applications were submitted in the late summer of 2018. Therefore, he vested under Title 18A, which is our standard Central Business District regulations. He did not vest under Title 18B, which is the downtown subarea plan regulations. 18B requires additional and extensive architectural requirements in addition to the payment of traffic mitigation fees. By vesting under the old code, the developer is not required to make payment or build Title 18B. The requirements to approve an application are found in RCW 8414060 and also in the Lakewood Municipal Code Title III, Chapter 364. In 364030, you find the specific criteria. And basically, what I'm going to report to you is the project meets minimum requirements in its basic housing product. However, the City Council has been more apt to approve applications for multifamily tax exemption when the project provides for superior design and the provision of improved quality of life amenities. And the council has been flexible as to what that can look like depending upon the property and, and relevant topographic circumstances. This was the case for the Springbrook Apartments, the Echelon Apartments, Rainier Terrace, and Town View Apartments, where applicant, applicants submitted that projects had exceeded the minimum requirements, if I can be very brief. For Springbrook, they were required to do a shoreline substantial development permit, and so there was the inclusion of a stream buffer. This is entirely a gated property, which is unique for an apartment complex. They installed architectural design elements that exceeded the minimum requirements. The project was actually built to standards that you find in a similar apartment complex in Dupont. They included clubhouse, excuse me, clubhouse, garage spaces. They performed major street improvements on three sides, and they provided for additional parking. For Echelon Apartments, the big issue here was they set aside one third of the property as open space. In addition, they were required to do frontages on two streets. They provided for garage spaces, a clubhouse and a gym, and enhanced interior fixtures. For Rainier Terrace, I did provide you, this is one of your more, one of your more recent multifamily tax exemptions, excuse me, this is Town View Apartments. This, this is also on Lake Grove. Lake Grove and 59th. On Rainier Terrace, an individual provided individual garages, additional landscape, and coordinated open space. And Town View Apartments, which I just handed out, was improved design. They placed the buildings adjacent to the street and parking behind the units. Open spaces at the rear of the building. You'll notice the large windows. That was, that's something that's required as a part of our current 18B or our downtown subarea plan. Third floor decks, which is unique, and then some covered parking spaces. Under our current code, covered parking spaces not always required. So I just wanted to give the council the opportunity to take a look at this project, to remind the council what you've looked at in the past and how you've examined these other multifamily projects, and basically provide staff with some direction on where to go. There are still some minor amendments to this project design that, in order to meet minimum code, that still didn't need to be acquired, required. And there is a requirement for payment of some of the fees that we've incurred on a dangerous building. But with that, Mr. Mayor and council, I, I would like to hear what you may have to say about this project and report back to the developer. Any thoughts that, that this group has?
So, so to set the stage and overly simplify it for myself and the audience, this project is, before we complete our next round of requirements for the Central Business District development, this project has been vested under, under the existing 18A requirements. So they were entitled, are entitled to get a permit to build to those standards, which would, however, incorporate the subarea plan requirements. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you say that?
The subarea plan requirements would be included in the-
No.
Not the subarea. So, just the basic 18A requirements.
Yes.
However, the grant of a multifamily tax exemption exemption is entirely discretionary with this body and can be conditioned.
That's my understanding, and I've been trying very clearly to articulate to the councils that your past policies have been to require something more than just basics.
So in fact, they could, it conceivably be conditioned on complying with the subarea plan?
I can certainly report that back to the developer, yes.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Explain, and maybe I, I apologize if I missed this, or certainly probably missed it when we did the subarea plan. What would be the differences when we look at the picture, the, the picture you have here on pages 34 and 35, to the best of your ability, if, under the new subarea plan, what would the changes be?
There would be more open space. The number of units could go up to 100 units per acre. So instead of building at 60, you would be looking at maybe as high as 120 to 100 and twenty to a hundred and fifty. Your parking standards go down. You're allowed to use on-street parking to meet your parking requirements. You can also have mixed-use development, which you can't have under 18A. You would not be allowed to place parking in the front, and the building would have to be close to the street. So the big issue is increased in height, moving the building closer to the street, more window space, reduced parking, although with a hundred and twenty spaces or units, you're going to have more requirement for parking. But ratio-wise, there would be fewer parking requirements under the CBD code. At the same time, the developer would be looking at traffic mitigation fees, which would be substantial given the number of units, whether it's sixty or a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty. And this would be a major redesign in what has been submitted. We have spoken to the developer about this already. Would they like to take advantage of the subarea plan? The answer was, at this time, thanks, but no thanks.
Mr. Whalen.
David, you can help me. When I'm looking at Town View versus the proposal with regard to the parking, you said the parking on the proposal before us is in the front. Does that mean adjacent to the street?
Yes.
As opposed to behind the building? I'm looking, I'm just trying to get a sense for...
Yeah, well, the parking for the proposed project, parking is in the front. That would be for, for Lake Grove and Ninety-Ninth.
Mean more visible from the road as opposed to green space, right?
The Town View Apartments, the parking is, you have two driveways, one off of Lake Grove and another one off of Fifty-Ninth, and you're placing the parking and separating it somewhat from the apartment complexes. And you've also placed the apartment complexes closer to the street. You'll also notice that they have expanded some of the parking further along Fifty-Ninth.
And that's something this proposal could do. It's just a matter of reorienting the building envelope?
Yes, but again, they vested under 18A, and so they're not necessarily required to do that.
I'm just wondering, from a topographical usage standpoint, do they lose the same service parking and they just reorient the building to the front by the street like Town View? Looks like they get the same parking in the back.
They could, but this, these are my words, and I need to be careful so as not to put other people, you know? But this is a product that that developer is familiar with. And you see a lot of apartment complexes built in this context. If you look at a rectangular piece of property, it's quite common to place parking in the front and then the buildings in the back. In this case, you are allowed to do that, but if you do so, you also have to provide for landscaping or treatment adjacent to a hundredth street. And in all fairness, the developer is building to higher density. You're roughly at, I believe, forty-six units per, forty-two units per acre. They got rid of some crappy properties. They are providing for affordable housing. They are meeting our minimum code requirements. So there are some benefits here, but in many ways, this is, I know, not exactly what the community was looking for with the adoption of the downtown plan. So, if you see me struggling a little bit with this, that's why.
Well, just one last comment from me here. I appreciate it, and I think that vesting rights means something, but I think that there's an opportunity for some negotiation and encouragement to perhaps provide a little bit more design finesse. This is an area that we have put a lot of time and effort into, and in exchange for the discretion with regard to the multifamily tax credit, I would like to see something more.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Viewer, one of the things that you didn't address, I understand that they vested in October prior to the November first date where they would have had to have met standards of the downtown plan, subarea plan, that, I'm trying to read between the lines here, did they make some Herculean effort to meet that, intentionally meet that deadline, or is that coincidental?
In fairness to the applicant, we did have a meeting with them, and we indicated to them that if you do not get this project done, you could find yourself being subject to 18B. At the time, the thought was that the council was going to take action in September or August, but the council did not take action until October with the code becoming effective November the first. So he actually ended up having sufficient time to submit his applications and vest under the old code.
That, in the subarea plan, for multifamily projects that were not mixed-use, your discussion here, in terms of the difference, didn't discuss the separation element that we wrote into the plan. Is that sort of neither here nor there because this project is not so close to another multifamily, non-mixed-use unit that it would be allowed either way? Or is it in that thing of where if it was subject to the subarea plan, it might be too close to another proposed project?
It's good questions, Mr. Brandstetter, but I found the issue to be moot because they'd vested under 18A. So if they'd vested under 18A, I didn't even need to take a look at that particular element.
Okay. And I'm, I had a, I think I heard contradictory comments. You know, it was, I read the agenda and you mentioned something, and you said they're doing this and they're providing for some affordable housing and being able to go and do that. But on page twenty-one of what we had here, it said applicant is proposing market-rate housing, not affordable housing.
Yes.
So, and so if there's no affordable housing in this project, where is the, where does that stand with the multi-tax exemption situation?
Good question. When I first wrote this up, I was under the impression that it was just market rate, but I went back and took a look at the application again. He did indicate he wanted it to be affordable, and at the very minimum, he's required to have twenty percent of the units affordable. So that's an error in the report.
So, in the plans that he submitted, that he particularly indicate, in past ones, we've actually had, like, the most recent one that we approved, we were able to show the units in this building and this stairwell are one of the ones that are going to be affordable. Is this project submitted with that level of specificity where we can see the impact on the inventory of affordable housing as well as market-rate housing?
At this time, he has not delineated those, the location of those units, but we can certainly ask him to provide that information.
But he's committed to having those units?
According to the application, yes.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the position you're in. I agree with what Deputy Mayor Whalen had to say, but before we give you final direction, I'd like to take a moment and play the devil's advocate with you for a minute. The developer signed or worked under the impression of 18A. Yes?
He, yes, however, he also knew that the city of Lakewood was working on a new downtown plan.
Was it ever communicated to this developer that when 18B came into existence, that he would therefore be subject to that?
I recall in my meetings with him, my comments would have been that this project would be better if it were a part of 18B and not a part of 18A.
And did I not understand you to say that he would have no part of that?
His preference, if he could, would be to develop under 18A so as to avoid, most likely, the traffic mitigation fees and the different design standards.
I just want us to be clear when we tell someone who, as you admitted, cleaned up the lot, is working with all of the conditions we set forth, that it could be construed that we are changing the rules in the middle of the game. Wouldn't you agree?
If you take a look at my recommendation to the planning, to the city council, is requesting, you know, what are the council's thoughts on this project?
I agree, I know.
But the other part is approve the application.
Okay. Now, I happen to, like I said earlier, I agree with what Deputy Mayor Whalen stated. We put a lot of work into this downtown area. In twenty, like I mentioned, I was thinking about this this afternoon, twenty years from now, I don't want to see something that's going south when the rest of us is going north. So my recommendation would be that we make that change from A to B. It's a straight line. The devil is finished. Thank you.
This is a very, I feel caught, frankly.
Yeah, no, I understand, and that's, like I said, I just want to be clear with the audience and with us and with what I, as I understand this. Thank you, David.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Echelons was under 18A.
Yes.
They did a great deal more upgrades...
Yes.
Than what is shown here. So I would definitely go with either A or B.
So, my understanding of the council's direction at this point would be to meet with the applicant developer and request that they provide a higher level of quality of development than what's been submitted so far, and we'll find out what he has to say.
Thank you.
I think I'd join in that. I, you know, we have certain goals with respect to housing. Greater number of apartments is not necessarily comport with our goal of creating a reasonable amount of middle-market housing, which we don't have now. And so I'm in favor of using the tax exemption very sparingly to accomplish goals. If somebody wants to take out a mobile home park like they did at First Acres and build somewhat upgraded apartments there, that's a great improvement. I would hope that we can communicate that if the developer wishes to proceed under the entitlements of 18A as they now exist, we will do absolutely nothing to impede his progress, and we will process that in an expeditious manner. And at the same time, I would hope that there would be an opportunity to convince them to build a more enhanced project, in which case I would likely favorably consider the tax exemption.
I understood that prior to coming to this meeting this evening, and I was approaching this project with some level of trepidation because I had an expectation, and that's what the council was going to say.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, just to clarify, and we're not really changing any rules because the rules always were, you needed our approval, yes or no, to be able to go and do that. That, you know, approval comes with, there's a bill that comes before the council and you, and we vote to approve it. That if our consensus is that we're not really looking at considering approving this, you know, we went through with the property on One Hundred and Twenty-third about what is the process for saying no? In other words, and do we, do we not vote to say no? Or do we just send a messenger off in there to see what happens to him when he delivers the message?
I know that the steps on to this and that there is a process, we'll continue to follow it. Thank you.
Anything further from Mr. Viewer? Have some guidance?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we move to the JBLM Land Exchange Business Plan update, or putting a stake in the JBLM Land Exchange Business Plan Updates Heart. For this, we have Mr. Adamson joined by Mr. Knight. You look very dapper tonight, Mr. Knight.
Council members, thank you for your time tonight. With me is Mr. Tom Knight, the Chief of Staff for JBLM, if you have any questions on what I have to put out today. This constitutes a final report, although the draft is eighty-nine pages long, and I know you haven't read it yet. Save the comments, I get back tonight. We can make adjustments. But any discussion of the JBLM land exchange has to start with the understanding of the North Clear Zone project and the Action Implementation Program that we came up with. The idea of the Woodbrook Land Exchange was Action Five from our AIP, from that North Clear Zone project, and it was to occur during Phase One and Phase Two of what we laid out in the AIP. The concept was for JBLM to work with Pierce County and the city of Lakewood to complete a land exchange that raises funds for voluntary property acquisition and could also provide a potential future site to relocate those light industrial businesses from the North Clear Zone to this new business park. So, we reached out to the Office of Economic Adjustment and committed eighty thousand dollars towards the writing of this business report. We contracted with White and Smith Planning and Law Group, who had served as a subcontractor to us on both the 2015 J-LOSE and the 2016 Action and Implementation Plan. So the work began in May of 2018 with a site reconnaissance of the Woodbrook area, but the project was terminated in late October. We'll talk about that more. This was the site as originally proposed. It's a hundred-acre Woodbrook site, is located north of the proposed, and we'll talk more about this, crossbase highway easement and JBLM's training area, seven north. It's adjacent to the city of Lakewood, but within the city's UGA. The property was considered suitable for light industrial uses, which is consistent with nearby existing land uses, and able to support similar businesses that would be relocated from the North Clear Zone. The initial appraised value of this land was one million eighty-four thousand dollars. The analysis that we went through considers demand for warehousing and distribution sites and how the Woodbrook site meets demands of these uses. The site-specific evaluation used residual land value as an assessment tool for market feasibility. Just as a reminder, residual land value is the difference between the capitalized value of a development and project development costs, not including site acquisition. If the land, if the residual land value is greater than the typical cost to acquire land and cover any additional site-specific costs, the project is considered feasible under modeled conditions. So this was the plan. As depicted, the Woodbrook site appeared to have a high likelihood of market success given the success of the Lakewood Industrial Business Park on Ninety-Fifth Street Southwest, the new Thorn Lane Logistics Center off of One-Fiftieth Street Southwest, and the generally known demand for distribution and warehousing facilities in the region. Most important, development of the Woodbrook property would not negatively impact JBLM training or operations, which is the primary consideration for transferring lands out of military control. This plan targeted willing sellers in the city who would provide businesses with voluntary relocation assistance. This ended up being our preferred option, which is slightly reconfigured. First, note the proposed cross-high bay easement and a strip of land just to the south of that, that provided twenty-two additional acres, and a triangle, I think this thing has a pointer on it, right over here to the east of One-Fiftieth, which is an additional seventeen acres. We thought this was preferred because of the large wetland and wetland setback from Lake Mondris that you can see center of the site, and the oak tree habitat that encumbered the area as well. This would end up, this preferred option would end up with seventy-four buildable acres. But also notice the... But also notice the wellhead locations, which at the time were not finalized, so we drew a big oval around all of them to give you the setbacks. The Woodbrook property, however, was considered not feasible for transfer. The chief reasons were the wetlands, you can see in the center of the site, the extent of sewer and wellhead protection areas identified over the western portion of the property, and protected habitat that you can see there to the south. Also, there were significant costs to construct off-site infrastructure to serve the property to the tune of nearly $14 million, and this was an estimate from Public Works. And I've got the breakout of what those costs are, if you're interested. So with that site deemed no longer feasible, we looked at alternative sites. And these four sites you see here, two on the left graphic and two on the right graphic, I'll quickly give you an explanation on. These are the east side, they are not in the city's urban growth area, which was the first problem. Option two there on the left screen is 171 acre portion of Training Area Nine. Option three is a 342 acre portion, also in Training Area Nine. Option four, 38 acre portion in Training Area Fifteen, and option five, a 134 acre portion in Training Area Fifteen. Options two and three were eliminated because the combined site had been earmarked for a potential regional fire training facility, which would directly support and benefit Lakewood and Pierce County. Also, option three had previously been offered to the Washington National Guard to use as a training area or site for a new armory. Option four was really just too small to be viable for the project we had thought about. And option five has been used as a buffer against potential encroachment and was also outside of the UGA. So then we turn to three more options that Public Works came up with, and I'll explain each of these. The Bridgeport Way Industrial Site, which is right there off the main gate to McCord, is encumbered by the safety arc of 800 munitions areas off JBLM. It's further obligated and required for current JBLM use. So essentially, that's where McCord and a lot of other store munitions, and it's in the safety danger zone area. The Murray Road Site will serve as the area for future JBLM log center access control point. In addition, this area, if converted to civilian uses, would impact logistics and deployment operations, as it is the main commercial vehicle access point for all of JBLM. In addition, the new I-5 Thorn Interchange will use more than half of the proposed Murray Road Site for stormwater management and other needs associated with that interchange. The North Fort Industrial Site, on the bottom of the slide, is located in Training Area A East, and if accessed by JBLM for civilian uses, it would amount to an encroachment into JBLM training lands. So just to conclude, I know you can read this, I thought it might be interesting for you to know, we did come up with a process that's transferable to other communities and other installations and could be used for the future. What we came up with was this. To do a site survey is about $2,500, just to establish the property boundaries. To do property appraisals, which we did not do for this project, is an additional $10,000 to $20,000, depending on the complexity of the land site. Market feasibility analysis is $10,000 to $25,000, depending on the level of detail you want for that analysis. Environmental impact statements, $20,000 to $50,000, depending on the challenge the communities have in outreach, if necessary, such as historic artifacts and protected species habitats, which we ran into here. Property searches, another $2,500 to $5,000, and a fiscal impact analysis, about $10,000 to $25,000, depending on the level of analysis desired. So the total is approximately $110,000 to $120,000 if we want to take this on, or if any community wants to take this on into the future. We committed $79,600 of our OEA grant, and I think we're prepared to take your comments at this time.
Well, I commend you on all the work that's done, and I feel I owe you, in some ways, an apology, because I conceived this five years ago, thought it might be, an even different site, thought it might be a bright idea, contacted some, or military contacts, said, is there any property that you think might be suitable for this, looking for a way to create a fund for North Clear Zone acquisition. Unfortunately, not every seemingly bright idea works well. This one certainly didn't, but it took a lot more extensive effort to chase it to ground than originally anticipated, and I commend you for the thorough job that you have done, virtually exhausting options. Any other comments?
Other than that, Mrs. Lincoln?
And Tom's here just to make sure you don't change your mind. Oh, yeah, you got something out of their money, then, so good.
Bottom line is, there's no availability from the projects we've looked at for land swap to work.
Not for the sites that...
Not for the sites that we explored. Yeah, that's correct.
Not much left to explore.
Well, I don't know.
Well, and look at the caveat, that what we know about those lands right now, the ones that aren't encumbered, if that changes, they're back on the bill.
Or if, you know, the army's needs change, so that their long-range needs may free something up. And example, that might, I would say that up Murray Road, you know, maybe something will change someday, and that won't be something that is needed operationally, and it would be a natural housing development adjacent to the city of Lakewood. It's just, the army has uses for it.
The other value is, we can say with a straight face to DOD folks, we've run down any number of options to help fund Clear Zone issue, which is, yes, it's a community issue, but it really is Department of Defense and Air Force issue.
The other thing we discovered in developing what the process is, the federal process to transfer land, it's a minimum, absolute minimum, three-year process. And it involves many other agencies than just JBLM. Ultimately, the GSA and other federal agencies can put a bid on the land before they could exchange it. The only nuance in our case is the Pierce County, the clause, reversionary clause, not quite sure how that would apply. That was written in 1919, the law that was enacted for federal property transfers, 1949. So I'm not sure what the precedence would be in that case.
Mr. Brad Center.
Well, you know, I certainly appreciate the diligence in which you've explored this option to be able to go through and do that. And, you know, some projects are, you end up with sunk costs that, you know, and they're just sunk costs. They don't justify going on and beating your head against the wall to be able to go and do that. But, so now that we're going to do some dusting off of the drawing board, that does the SMMCP work plan for this year, have some room in it to do some brainstorming about what's an alternative set of options to do some things, to generate some revenue associated with transferring some ownership of the Clear Zone properties.
The work plan, still in the work plan until the end of this year, end of 19. I don't have any additional funds to continue to contract out work right now, but it's something we could continue to coordinate with the base.
Well, I think we sort of need to sort of re-put our caps on and think in an entirely new direction than maybe we haven't before to see what else is, what's doable as an alternative. And I don't have one to suggest, other than I, you know, this isn't the end of the need, it's just the end of this strategy at the moment until something changes.
I think that the micro-strategy changes from time to time, for example, with rep funds. This year they're in, next year they're out. Now they're committed, they need a match. The Air Force has got some money, civilian side has to kick some in. The Army has some leftover money, but you can't get without the Air Force saying yes. I mean, we have all these moving pieces that Bill and others have worked to line up, and that will continue.
After the government shutdown.
Yeah, if they open back up and if the people stay there long enough that they can be educated on it. Well, thank you very much. Next, we have an economic development update.
Good evening. Okay, so I'm excited to present to you tonight. We have a lot going on in economic development, a lot more in housing than this report, because we do have rental housing safety and other programs making way for additional development and redevelopment in the city. And so let's get started. Okay, the first slide here shows a little bit of information on what we're seeing in permitting for housing. So we do have an increase in 2018 over 2017 for a single family, 67 versus 48 in 2017. Multi-family projects also a significant increase. Really only two projects in 2018, the Springbrook Apartments and the Town View Apartments comprise that number you see there of multi-family units. Overall valuation for a single family has increased significantly as well. And touching on, just one, a couple other points I wanted to point out for that, average value per home is still in the middle market, which we want to see. Not a lot of product yet, but it's right in the middle market, which we don't have a lot of. Remodels for a single family are up about 40% for 2018. And also, we're beginning to see a significant increase in multi-family unit remodels as a result of some of the work we're doing out there with the rental housing safety And then plating activity is also significant. We have about 34 acres that's represented in the plating activity and about 120 lots.
The plating is important, that's what developers always look for, because that's your availability of new lots coming into the market. Are they pending, finalized, and so forth? So we are now paying more attention to that, and we'll see more data in that in future years. And that's also a subject that comes up in the Buildable Lands Report.
Okay.
So there's less, what this is telling us, there's less plating activity in 2018 than houses built. But some of those houses could have been built on lots where we knock stuff down.
Yes, yes.
Those wouldn't show in the planning.
On some of the abatements, you're seeing replacement of old tired houses with new housing stock. Some cases, it's apartment complexes, other cases, it's single-family homes. I can think of several in certain parts of the neighborhood, even around Forest Hill and Park, where there has been redevelopment as a result of abatement activity. So it's kind of a combination of things.
It looks like I've seen newer houses, like in the Lake City neighborhood, too?
Yes. We did have a plat that was approved off of Military Road. Plats are very difficult to approve in Lakewood, the neighbors always hate them. And so we have a very extensive public review process, the same as the case for PDDs. But that's been the council's direction, so we're moving forward. We have one PDD that was approved in 2018, and we have two pending currently.
Ms. Barth.
Thank you. Can you tell me, based on the information that you have, are the plats that are being developed, are they being then built out by the developer, or are they being transferred, sold to, from the developer to a builder to build? Do we know that?
It varies. You have one coming forward in February, Wyndham Oaks. There, in that particular case, the owner, the developer died, and so the plat was stuck. And so it had to go through a process with the courts to determine ownership. It was eventually sold, and now we have a different project applicant coming forward with the final plat. Short plats are usually one or two lots, they're not a large creation of lots. It's when you get the short plats with nine that you tend to have the developer stay with the project all the way through.
Okay. So we wanted to show you kind of what kind of abatement activity that's been occurring 2015 to 2018. So we're getting more nuisance and abatements into 2018, cleaning up garbage, junk cars, and so forth. City private split is shown here, who is actually performing the work. As of January 4th, we had nine outstanding liens and 54 abatements pending. So a significant uptick in that work. And so, you know, we're really working hard to clean up the city and get it ready for redevelopment, new residential, as well as commercial products.
What's the most common type of, just cleaning up garbage outside?
A common public nuisance is going to be junk vehicles. That's a big one in the city of Lakewood. A public nuisance, we don't get our money back as easily as on a dangerous building abatement. So we focus on, dangerous building abatements more so than public nuisances. And we kind of pick or choose on public nuisances. But, you know, an average tear-down cost for the city of Lakewood on a single-family house to be between $10,000 and $15,000 for demolition. That's on the high side because we have to pay prevailing wage. And also, too, I think in 2018, Jeff Gumm reported back to me that we received $290,000 in money back from some of the projects. So now we're getting enough money that, if you take a look at those numbers, if we're doing $250,000 to $300,000 a year, we're able to keep the wheels spinning and the exact same money is going out as coming back in. So that's what we were trying to accomplish. City manager and I've had some discussions about actually paying back the general fund at some point. I don't know if that's really going to happen, but we are moving forward with the abatements, and this is a successful program by the city. I also think it has some ties to reducing homelessness in Lakewood, because these facilities are not available for people to get into and cause problems.
Mr. Brad Center.
Thanks, Brad. Could I just get some clarification from my other thing about the liens outstanding data? You know, you mentioned in the chart says 2018, there's nine, but then there's the other 10 numbers there, and the line is liens outstanding. So am I reading that, that there are four liens that were initiated in 2015 that are still outstanding, and that we've really got a total of 19 liens outstanding now? Or are those numbers, not January 19, but January of the following year?
So I believe I might have misspoke. So actually, all the numbers are all of the liens, so it's the total. So 18, if that's, I think 18 was the total, correct, Dave? Because those were shown for each year, and so the total is 18 outstanding. Okay?
You have an abatement report coming back from Mr. Gumm later in the year. We'll get more specific data on that. This is just a more of a quick overview of housing and some of the things that we're finding as far as trends.
So nine for... So nine for just eighteen and then fifty-four pending abatements.
And some of those fifty-four, when they get notice, we'll take care of it and get off the list. And then we'll go through and adjust the list monthly with CSRT, police officers and others.
So on to rental housing, another great program that we're working on. That particular program is really going quite well. As you can see, we have about fourteen thousand five fifty rental units, of which eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-eight are registered. About eighteen percent of those are single-family, fifty-two seventy-six properties in Lakewood, of which twenty-two hundred and nineteen are registered. And nineteen hundred and two of the registered properties are exempt from the program for various reasons such as owner occupied or family occupied and, and things like that. We have already inspected fourteen hundred and ninety-four in twenty eighteen. Of those, three hundred and ninety-one units requiring a re-inspection, or they failed, and all of them are performing upgrades.
Ms. Bradford?
The, at the Lake City Neighborhood Meeting, there was a comment from someone that had gotten their property inspected and they had not used a city inspector. They had used, late in the year and they had used a private inspector. And they had been told that they, property had not passed. But they weren't told what the deficiencies were that needed to be corrected. And it seemed to be that that was somewhere in the communication between the private inspector submitted the inspection report directly to the city, but not to the property owner. Got word that it didn't pass, but, but didn't, and, and so I just wasn't clear about in that situation where we're not the inspector, how does, how does the communication loop get closed? There, someone thinks they have to do a re-inspection, but they don't know what's got to be inspected.
Well, if, if I were paying for a private inspector, I would request a copy of the worksheet. From the worksheet that you determine whether or not that you failed or already passed. If, if she doesn't have one, if the owner doesn't have one, they can contact Heather Holverstot. We can, we can get a copy of that because we have it. And then we can go through the list and determine what, what parts they failed upon. And we also keep everyone's emails, and so we use email addresses to advertise or contact people because it's faster than the mail. So please contact, have her contact Heather, we'll run it down.
It seemed to be a situation of where there was never a paper copy of the worksheet. It was submitted electronically directly to the city and so there wasn't a paper copy generated.
If, if you want to provide me.
And I'm repeating what the lady said.
I, I know that we received a lot of private inspectors at the very last minute in December. I know that they've been busy entering the data. So I, I would ask that they contact us.
Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Ms. Mary. I'm just not clear on the registered and not registered. Are they, if they're not registered, are we forcing them to register?
Yes, they're in violation of our rental housing regulations if they are not registered at this time. And so we are trying to determine exactly how many are not registered that are not exempt. And then they will be contacted. Also too, one of the tricks that we have used has been very effective is if you get polled for an inspection, which is polled at random for twenty nineteen, and you've not been registered, we compel your registration as a part of the inspection. We have found that to be a very effective way of getting properties on registration without having to go through a lot of difficult code enforcement issues and citations. Our preference is to do it that way and people ultimately do comply and come in and get their inspections and pay their paperwork. I mean, the fee is only twelve dollars per unit, so it's not like it's a difficult fee. It's one of the, I think it's the lowest charge of anyone running a rental housing program in Washington State.
So some of those larger numbers and some of those could be exempt.
I can tell you right now that there's a significant number of exempt properties. Another one that we have difficulty with on rental registrations is single-family rentals because they come and go all the time. And, and so that, that's more problematic for us. Our focus has been on the apartment complexes, duplexes and triplexes and getting them registered. And then as over time permits, we can pull in the single families, but they can switch out very quickly from owner occupied to renter.
Thank you. Okay, next I just want to touch a little bit on trends that we've seen. So average price per square foot for multi-family in Lakewood has been fairly flat over the last few years. It's come up slightly in Pierce County. The cap rate is going down, has been consistently going down over the last three years, which shows a more of a propensity for folks to come and consider Lakewood as a place to build here. Number of listings has increased slightly by three percent. Prices were up about nine point five percent in twenty eighteen. Expecting that to stay fairly consistent at eight to nine percent over the next year or so. And as you know, we, we have a lack of new products, so we're hoping to encourage more product in Lakewood going forward. Okay, one of the things that we've updated last year was our rental market survey, which was pretty revealing of what's going on out there. Occupancy rates are still very good, slightly better in Lakewood than Tacoma. And rents have gone up dramatically, so we're kind of watching that to see, see how that goes. Making housing increasingly unaffordable and for many folks. Demand is high, as you know, and there's not enough product in the market. Building, we have seen some slowing of building of a few projects currently under construction in Tacoma. Some of them either stopped or halted for a short period of time due to significant changes in land prices, materials and labor. So we're watching that. We have seen some slowing in the economy. For-sale product is increasingly unaffordable in many areas, which creates more pressure across the board. And then moving on to overall permitting activity. So we're seeing a higher value of, and new commercial buildings. Less TIs last year, more multi-family, more demos and including smaller, less valuable structures being demolished. The line items here are just a sample of what we are showing you tonight. The totals do, are the totals for the year. And then this slide.
Could you go back a bit? Maybe it's just, it's a small number, it might be an anomaly. Why in their last column is the, the solar, the fees are about six percent of the total? And in other areas, they're one percent?
I'll have to check the numbers just to see. I don't, I don't know offhand, but we'll check.
So it's jumping to single-family residences, that's a good, that's a good trend.
We'll check that.
What are the commercial buildings, Becky? On those, I mean, that's a significant jump.
What are the commercial buildings?
Yeah, just off the top of your head.
Sure, so one of them would have likely, let's see, forty-four, that would have been the Panitoni Building. Yeah, I'd have to look and see which ones.
Or new commercial buildings.
There's also the Lee Medical Pavilion was twenty eighteen as well.
Seventeen, the building on ninety-sixth.
The Dermody Project?
Dermody was also one of the projects.
That was seventeen.
And that could be the seventeen, okay.
Correct. Okay. All right. So there's just some more detail on the overall permitting totals for all permits. Higher number in valuation, of course, for commercial buildings. New single-family up, as mentioned before. Other significant increases in residential remodels. Number of permits increased thirty-eight percent. Increased fees collected at fifty-one percent and value of projects overall was up sixty-two percent in twenty eighteen. And then getting into major infrastructure projects. As you probably know, work has begun on the I-five JBLM congestion relief project. And that started in October. There will be an open house in Tillicum in the spring to provide another update on the interchanges. Berkeley will be the first interchange to be completed, anticipated at the end of twenty nineteen. Prep work has begun on Thorn Lane, or I'm sorry, prep work will begun, begin in February, March of this year on Thorn Lane. And that interchange is expected to be completed the end of twenty twenty. Completing the I-five expansion with the two interchanges, one nineteenth to Thorn Lane is anticipated spring, summer of twenty twenty-one. They're still in right-of-way discussions on the Connector Road. So I don't have an anticipated date yet on that, but there will be a Public Works update to you shortly on, on all projects.
So are, are these DOT diagrams?
Yes, they are.
Do you have any idea why they orient one north and the other one south? Trying to confuse me.
It's what we had to work with.
It's a little confusing. It's probably me.
They don't know if they're coming or going?
Okay. Okay, other major projects that I wanted to touch on this evening. Of course, the Colonial Plaza, which is really a showcase project for the city of Lakewood. We're really excited about that project and hoping that will be completed in September of this year. Of course, we're still working with the libraries on building two new libraries here in the city of Lakewood. One would be the Lakewood Library here in the Central Business District or part of the downtown as well as a branch library in Tillicum. And then, of course, the downtown sub-area plan, which you adopted. We're very excited to work with many developers and brokers on trying to make those projects come to fruition. And then one hundred and twenty-third Street is another project that we intend to complete in twenty nineteen that will connect Bridgeport to Forty-seventh in Springbrook, which will provide for a better connection of transportation, both residential and also for the new potential industrial project proposed on the former gravel pit on Forty-seventh Street. We have a number of industrial development projects that we're working on in Woodbrook. The school site, which is thirty-nine acres, is under contract for sale by an organization. Developers, I believe it's Black Creek. And I'm not sure if they've completed the sale yet, but again, that's thirty-nine acres that will redevelop to industrial. We have another fifteen acres, which will redevelop as well, kind of in the middle of Woodbrook, which is the former Roanoke Apartments and another, which is on ten acres. And another five, which they'll add for distribution and warehousing. And then we have two additional projects, one on the corner of Woodbrook and one forty-sixth and another on Woodbrook and one fiftieth. Those are, those are each about six acres. So a lot of industrial going on right now. And then, of course, capital investment projects for twenty nineteen and twenty-two, twenty twenty to the tune of about thirty-four million dollars. And local interest projects, we have more gateway projects coming up. Which, we will have three in twenty nineteen. One will be at Far West and Stillicum Boulevard. The second will be at Seventy-Fourth and Custer and the third will be at Military and one hundred and twelfth. And of course, we expanded the Springbrook Park in twenty eighteen. And twenty nineteen will be completing the Harry Todd Park expansions for ADA accessibility beach bulkhead improvements and so forth. And then Fort Stillcome upgrades will include upgrades to Angle Lane and adding a small park at, at the end near Elwood. Improved signage utilities, which will include sewer and water for improved fire, fire flow to the buildings at the park. And repaving Angle Lane once those utilities are in place. Okay, so business licensing. We transferred to the state for business licensing in June of last year. It'll probably take us another six months to go through and process all of the business licensing and so forth. These numbers are very, very estimate. We think that there's probably over five thousand businesses doing business here in Lakewood, both here physically in Lakewood, roughly two thousand to twenty-two hundred. And then a number of new businesses also coming in. We'll report back on this probably later in the year when we have better numbers.
How do you know what's active? How do you know what's active? For example, in pre-Lakewood, in nineteen ninety, when we were building our home, my wife registered a trade name as a, as a sole proprietor so that we could buy our landscaping, a lot of plants and trees and those type of things that are at a wholesale warehouse or a wholesale place that demanded that you have a business license or registration at the time or trade name or something. So we just, we did that. That was the only activity I'd ever had, but it showed up for years.
Right, yep.
We rely heavily upon Department of Revenue to give us information on state business licensing requirements. What normally happens is when you register now online for your state license, they'll ask me some questions about where you're located or where you're doing business. And at that point in time, the system works to get all of the applications for both the state and the local business license approved at once. And so there's an authorization process where they ship it back down to us for our review. We accept it and then they're authorized to move forward and approve the business license. So we are keeping a better record of active business licenses, but we really won't know if that five thousand number is accurate till about August of two thousand and nineteen, after we had one full year of operations on the state system. So we're still in the process of collecting data. The other thing to be aware of is that home-based number. And that's going to come back on Title eighteen A. We have a lot of home-based businesses in Lakewood and those that are successful actually sometimes cause problems because their business is becoming more intense than what it should be in a residential neighborhood. The question will be, does the city council, like, wish you want to maintain our current standards or do you want to tighten them up? So I'm giving you a heads up that that's going to be a topic that will be talked about later. But the business licensing does point out that you probably have a significant number of home-based businesses, more so than we know about. And that's, that's what's happened in all cities. Is there a whole lot more home-based businesses than people knew of? And it's requiring everybody to get home occupation permits, where before they were not. Just a little sidebar.
So we do rely on the state for that and so I imagine that after businesses aren't submitting their quarterly and annual reports, they fall off. And so we do rely on the state for that information. Okay, so jobs. This particular report. This particular report shows as of quarter three of each year, we do know that there's an increase of one point six percent, 2018 as compared to 2017. This is higher than Tacoma and the state, which was at around one percent for that same time period. Retail trade actually went down slightly. Keep in mind, that's seasonal to some extent. So at what point in time we take those numbers, they do fluctuate. And so the numbers are, show a pretty healthy and balanced economy and good increases over time. We'd like to see more primary job increases, those that bring more money into Lakewood and sell outside of Lakewood and particularly the state. And increase in family wage jobs over time. Okay. One of the other projects that we're working on, we started, is a business survey. So we're reaching out to all of our businesses, trying to get as many of them to respond. And we're starting to get some good feedback on that. The annual survey, we will report out, probably have a draft the end of January and a final report sometime in February. We do know that about forty-six percent, we do ask about exporting, importing, about forty-six percent of those respondents say they export products, which is good. Again, primary businesses bringing in new money into the city. Thirty-three percent export out of the state. Twenty-seven percent import products and services for uses in their businesses. Forty percent say that they're growing, and thirty-five percent say that they're stable. Future, looking into the future of businesses, say forty-six percent plan to expand. And fourteen percent plan to remodel their current space in the next year.
From my perspective, this is kind of a big deal. I pay more attention to this than a lot of other statistics because you get a real feel for the business community. And I think we can really expand upon our economic development efforts if businesses recognize that the city is actively engaged in trying to find out what it is that they're having problems with and where can we be assistance or in some cases, keep our nose out of their business. So it goes both ways. But we'll go through this a little bit more in detail. But I think this is exciting, and I hope the city of Lakewood continues these kinds of programs in the future.
Okay, so a little bit more on the survey. So we asked them, what kinds of assistance do they need? What kind of forums would they like to see? And so it shows that they're really interested in tax code, financial resources. So fifty percent said they would like to see that or more help with that. Social media, government contracting, business networking, workforce, business plans, and productivity workshops. And then, when asked to talk, let's see, workforce challenges, oops.
You have a different slide.
I haven't gotten to that yet, sorry. Okay. And so workforce challenges, it's a big deal for businesses right now. So it is a challenge to find workforce. And so recruitment and retention of workforce and so forth is a challenge for them right now. And we already talked about that. Onto this slide just shows kind of calling out some of the different areas. We asked them what their level of satisfaction was. City services, not bad, looking about three to four. Development services at four. And then we also asked about housing, affordability and so forth. Four point two in terms of space availability and access to land. And quality of workforce at three point eight.
I have to admit, there's an error here because we show the scale from one to ten, but actually, the scale's only from one to five. So actually, we're doing pretty good.
Should be one to five, yeah.
Mr. Brenner, sir. So what accounts for quality of life being the lowest performing indicator?
What accounts for that?
Well, the lowest score on that is for quality of life. In other words, when people are surveyed and the thing that they rate lowest out of all of those things is quality of life, and I assume that means quality of life here in Lakewood.
Mm-hmm.
What do we attribute that to or what, you know? That would be an indicator that I'd like to be one of the highest as opposed to the lowest.
We do not ask them anything specific about that, unfortunately. But that's, I think that's good input, though. It's definitely something we want to know more about. So as we review the survey and see where are those questions coming up, then, and some of the businesses will provide their information and contact information. So it's an opportunity for us to follow up with them and ask why they rated it low or high.
Is the question look just like this? There's just this exact list and you're asked to put a number next to it or?
That is correct, yes.
Remember, this is the first slide that we've done this.
This is the first. We tried to include as many different points as we could. And, you know, we'll find out which areas would need more attention.
I would imagine this goes to issues of Lakewood's perception. Having lots of crime, that could be part of it. Could also be about transportation issues and just general congestion that you see along the I-5 corridor. Perhaps some of the issues with Lakewood's infrastructure meeting improve. If you're asking me what my thoughts would be, that is where I think that question, how it answers. And keep in mind, it's not, it's not quite a three. It could be better.
Okay. And then moving on, we do actually still go out and visit companies. We did about, we visited about a hundred last year. So it's fairly significant. There's always lots of follow-up to do as well. So some highlights on that. And just, we are working closely with Tactical Taylor, one of our business retention and expansion projects. So they're very important to us, are a significant manufacturer here in Lakewood. And so we're continuing to work with that, with them, and try to find sources of funds so that we can complete their relocation and expansion. Cascade Sanoco is another example of a company that we're working with. They're planning a one million dollar equipment expansion. They are a paper products manufacturer here in the Lakewood Industrial Park. And we're working with them. So that expansion will occur in 2019. Of course, other North Clear Zone properties focus on purchasing the remaining condos that exist in the Clear Zone and also finding additional funds to acquire property there. And we also work closely with SSMCP on other actions, such as the land swap that you heard about earlier today. And when we go out on our visits, as Dave mentioned, we like to find out, you know, where the city can help, what the challenges are and opportunities. And there's just a list of what's kind of going on in the market, nothing too surprising. Workforce is really high on the list, not only trying to find workforce, but skilled workforce, retaining those folks as well.
To deal with WAC recovery is a broadband, that's surprising to me.
That's not necessarily specific to Lakewood, although there's little spots here and there. But Pierce County as a whole still has a few areas that are not up to where companies feel they should be. Okay. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we really do have a lot of opportunities. We have a great mix of business, very diverse. We have a balance, pretty balanced economy and so forth, so.
So what's this, it's a standard ratio of jobs to population in Washington? Is there such a thing?
Standard?
PSRC actually monitors that. You can come back with that information.
Yeah, we can get that number.
Because we've got more than point five jobs per head population. So anecdotally, you figure the daytime population here is, seems to be larger than the nighttime population, which is unusual when it's considered a bedroom community and there are a lot of outfall commuters.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Pierce County is actually going to be hiring a consultant through Powell's to take a look at the level of job creation on a population basis. So you're actually going to see some of those numbers later this year.
Okay. Okay. So touch back a little bit on the key commercial projects. Of course, developing the downtown is high focus for us and the Colonial Plaza. And so encouraging folks to do, to perform and build projects within the downtown that will fit our desire for mixed use, you know, restaurants, tasting rooms, et cetera. And then, Pack Highway, we have two new hotels coming in in addition to what we have now. Spring Hill Suites, which is a Marriott product, which will be next door to the Town Place Suites. And then WoodSpring Suites, which is across from, will be across from the Lakewood Station.
So Spring Hill's going to break ground this next year? Is that going to go?
Yeah, it is still, yep, it's still, Woodbrook.
We met with them earlier in the year.
I'm sorry. WoodSprings will probably be breaking ground before Spring Hill. I believe that Marriott will probably likely wait until 2020 to break ground on Spring Hill.
So, do you know, do you know what the difference in the product is between Town Place Suites? I'm kind of familiar with that as opposed to Spring Hill Suites?
I looked briefly. The Spring Hill is not a extended stay product. It does have like good amenities. And what I've been able to tell online is there are larger rooms. And so it's more of a, not an extended stay, whereas, of course, the Town Place Suite is.
Town Place Suites has a small kitchen kind of arrangement.
So it's more of a standard room, but with, it looks to me to be larger rooms.
Are they going to demolish the last of these old structures there?
The old pawn shop.
Oh, yes, yes, they will be demolishing those, yes.
Another question. Do we know, is it public knowledge, when or if the start light is changing over? Is that still kind of not a problem?
That application is moving forward. That, so that part is public. They need a, they leave a conditional use permit. They send in their revised traffic, transportation analysis. It's under review. As soon as that's complete, the effort is to bring it forward, the hearing exam as quickly as possible. So the project is on track. In that regard, my understanding is that that is public. That many of the vendors have already moved out and have moved to some of the other businesses on South Come Away or Pack Highway.
Has it been sold yet?
I keep hearing rumors, but I doubt it until the actual permits have been obtained. I know that this is the winter months, so the level of activity dies down substantially.
Okay. And then, of course, in Springbrook, Puget Sound Kidney Center has broken ground, so that's under construction now. May have mentioned, there is another industrial project in Springbrook. Pending review from Environmental and Army Corps on whether or not they can move forward on that project. It's potentially in the flood zone. And so there's a number of requirements that need to be addressed before that project can move forward. And of course, Woodbrook is a great project for us. We have several industrial projects in the works, I've already touched on that. And then, the super middle school on the Alice Man will start construction this year.
Yes, they've already obtained their building permits in December. They'll start right away so that they can meet the school year when they're ready.
And I wanted to touch briefly on opportunity zones because the opportunity is now. It's a great thing for investors there. I'm told there are already billions of dollars in investment funds just waiting for projects. So the key really is for us to find those projects out there that are ready to go or nearly ready to go, make sure that they're packaged so that they can attract those investment funds. So that'll be a priority for us to look at over the next several months. We have three zones. Tellicum, Woodbrook is one census tract. And then, Springbrook, and then what we're calling Lakeview Kendrick Street area. Our neighborhoods are our three zones.
We have a meeting with Mark Lahey, who has helped design, build these two buildings between City Hall. He wants to meet with city staff to talk about using the opportunity zone along Bridgeport Way. Isn't that great?
And.
Mr. Brenner, sir. So, is this all future or are there any current existing projects that were taking advantage of the fact that they're an opportunity? It's like the kidney dialysis centers in an opportunity zone. Did they take advantage of this? And do you expect any of the yet-to-be-constructed things in Woodbrook to take advantage of this?
Yeah, none of the projects, to our knowledge, have taken advantage of the opportunity zones as of yet. We are making it aware to all the folks that are doing projects of this availability to receive funds for their project.
Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the I-5 corridor included here?
Parts of it. From Bradley Lake Drive up to Bridgeport Way, that section is, that's over a mile.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, that's, actually, that census tract crosses the freeway, includes Pack Highway, so you get both sides of the freeway there. They were, they're defined by census tracts.
So the opportunity zone, an investor can't just invest directly in a project. So they have to invest into a fund, which then invests into the project. And just a couple of other things. It's a really good thing for investors, it's an ability to defer capital gains tax until 2026 on your original investment. And any appreciation on that investment is never taxed. So it's a, it's a, it's a good deal for folks. And then, those projects that are ready to go will attract the dollars.
You may see some requests for zone changes in the future in the opportunity zone that's found in tract oh seven one eight oh five. It's predominantly all residential and some public institutional with a hospital. But I can see people coming in and wanting to acquire perhaps some of the residential uses adjacent to Bridgeport Way on the east, contollating lots and coming with a project. So we'll see what happens. That's redevelopment potential that did not exist until the creation of this opportunity zone. The old restaurant that's now a bar, Cheers Bar, that's another potential site for opportunity zones. So we'll see. You can see, that could be a very, a very major upgrade in commercial residential uses.
All right. And just touching on tourism, there was a significant increase in out-of-state visitors, forty-six percent. Twenty eighteen as compared to 2017. Lodging tax revenues have also increased fairly significant. Seventy-one percent change 2017 to 2018. And then, becoming increasingly important for economic development as more discretionary funds become available, people are traveling more and so forth. So it's more national, as we're attracting more national and international. people are traveling more and so forth, so, um, it's more national, as we're attracting more national and international events to the area, we'll see an uptick in that as well. And, um, touching on Lakewood Image, uh, we'll be meeting with the designers, uh, January twenty-third to go over what they've discovered, um, through their interviews, uh, to look at brand positioning, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, um, with the anticipated delivery in April of our final anthem tagline messaging and a plan of how we're going to move forward with that, so we'll be back to council to, um, provide that. Likely Bryn, uh, will, will take that to you. And then recruitment, uh, we're, we will be increasing our activity for recruitment, um, for many reasons. And we're stepping up our efforts, um, getting information out to brokers, particularly, um, to build the downtown and so forth, working with many partners, um, and media, and, uh, also direct to those developers that we feel would be a good match for Lakewood. And then finally, uh, we did have a number of feature articles in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, uh, which has helped to increase the exposure for Lakewood, Business in Focus and Business View are both North American publications. They publish several articles about Lakewood, and FDI International is a new, um, publication that has, will be publishing the second article for Lakewood next month, and we had an article in August of South Sound Business. So we're continuing to get a number of feature articles, which helps to move us along as well. And with that, that concludes our remarks. Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, you do good work, and I appreciate the efforts you do. And I'm not speaking directly to this, but the one thing that you said, or not that you said, but that the graph indicated that bothers me is the quality of life. And, Mr. Bureau, you pointed at a, a graph that I agree with, it tells you more than realized, but if there's something else we can add to your wish list, I'd like to find out what the hell they're talking about, because the quality of life in this community has gone nothing but up. And how people can come to a, the opposite conclusion surprises me. And I would like, if we do, and it's not, I'm not assigning anything, Becky, you don't have to write this stuff down. But, that bothers me, because there has been a lot of good, hard, solid work for over two decades here, and for, if that was aimed at the business community, where they're coming up with that information, I'd like to know. Thank you.
I, I will, I will note that as recently as about three weeks ago, I interviewed, I was one of, an interview panel in my day job for a, a significant position where the applicant was, one of the applicants, interviewees was from the southeast. And, uh, he asked about some things, and we asked, where did you find out about Pierce County? And he said cops. Ms. Barth.
That's very poignant, um.
The residual.
I think it's, it's fabulous. Um, I do have a question, the business retention and expansion, you talked about that. And I think that you're doing a yeoman's job in, in keeping that open and keeping in touch with those businesses, and I just think that's great, um, keeping them here in our community. How are we getting the word out, how, how are we sharing the results of this information?
From the survey?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that we've, um.
Well.
I, I was just going to say, we haven't fully discovered how we're going to share that yet. However, of course, we'll involve, um, social media and so forth.
I mean, I'd be tooting our horn here, I'd just, just say it.
Keep in mind, this is the first time that we've done a survey of this type, and so, uh, we, we were kind of surprised by what we heard. And I, I think we've been so busy, frankly, just trying to get this report done, we haven't even had time to think about, you know, the good things that have come out of it, and how to communicate that to others. So that's yet to, to happen, but there's several good stories in here that you could put in the city's newsletter, you could put it online, you could do as a part of your website updates.
We could do all of that.
We could all do all those kinds of things, and so, there's, there's a lot of really good, strong messages that, that we need to, to talk a little bit more about. We're improving the housing quality in Lakewood, we're improving on, on fourteen-plus million dollars, up to nineteen million dollars on infrastructure per year, we're, we're, you care about our local businesses, we're trying to adjust to some of their needs. All that's very positive, but we haven't had time to think about how to tell the story.
I would ask you to make sure that we push that message.
No, it's fair.
Mr. Whalen.
Figuring out how I can articulate this. Yeah, I wonder if there's a way we can, and maybe we're doing this, so correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. I wonder if we can package some of the information we have, because we have lots of good data now, we're doing a lot of good things. Uh, I wonder if we can do a better job of target marketing potential developers, based on what we see out there in the community saying, those people would fit really well here in Lakewood, who are the decision makers, and let's get in front of them. And we get the materials, we call and make an appointment, and we say, we'd like to talk to you about opportunities in Lakewood. As opposed to waiting for them to come to us for an inquiry, we target and go to them, and provide information to them to see, you know, what are your two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty-one business goals look like? Have you thought about Lakewood for your next investment? A little similar to the one, meeting we had with that one group, probably could maybe follow up, and maybe you've done that with them. But I think if we can target ourselves and be strategic about who we want to come into the downtown, and figure out how to package information to them, it's seed planting, but it's targeted seed planting.
The other part to this too, and we haven't talked about it, is if you take a look at some of the workforce issues that have been identified, if you ask me, there's too much of reliance on the local businesses for their local network to find jobs, where perhaps they maybe should be expanding their, their reach beyond their network to find those employers or employees that they're looking. There's, there's some interesting little factoid that have come out here that, that need further, further explanation.
And I agree with you, but I, I think what we need now, that we've spent a lot of time and resources developing the sub-area plan, and you guys have done, you almost work on any number of fronts, I think now it's time for us to get aggressive, and to find the kind of development that we are hoping to attract by virtue of all the good work we've done in the sub-area plan, and find out who out there in the marketplace is doing that kind of work, and go after them, and say, we want you in Lakewood. Here are the tools we've got, we've got this multi-family tax incentive program that we talked about tonight, and we believe you would do well by locating here, and here's what we're looking for. What can we do to accommodate you to make the decision to come to Lakewood? I, I just think we got to be aggressive about it.
And one, one of the, uh, I, I believe in poaching.
I do too, and that's why.
And one of the, uh, one of the po, real potential areas there is the Portland metropolitan area. Uh, the political environment here is, is deteriorated to the extent that businesses don't feel welcome. Uh, the, I spent a day with their, uh, public safety folks, uh.
Where's this?
Portland, uh, at their nine-one-one center, and, um, we talked to, you know, both the police and fire and some D E M-type folks, and, and they have to have civil unrest contingency plans. And, and going to unarmed police force that are, are supposed to protect the customers and the, 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 uh, businesses. And we don't have an income tax, and yet, if, if the folks down there have some confusion that the environment is the same here because they hear about Seattle, and we're very different. So if we have lower costs, we have no income tax, we don't have the political environment of Seattle, we have the same Great Northwest quality of envi, environment, uh, there's, there's some, well, there's a lot to be said with, uh, with respect to looking to folks in Portland who may want to relocate a small manufacturing business or, or a distribution business, uh, because there really are some advantages, so, and, and some of those are in the, the cusp of abandoning ship down there right now, so. If, if we do what Mr. Whalen suggests, is targeting the particular areas, and you can look, look to, uh, those targeted, sectors that might be looking to relocate.
I think it's going to take a couple of cards to fall, you know, we got to help be a catalyst for, I know we are doing a lot of that, but I just think we've got to get a good mixed-use project downtown to be the first, we got to get that first linchpin to do it. Because otherwise, uh, we will be the folly of whatever comes that meets the code and the zoning, and they're going to apply, and we're going to have another gym at the QFC that we don't need, uh, because it meets the zoning and the code, and if we can get aggressive out there on these people, figure out how we can track what we want that, uh, meets the private markets' needs as well, but we got to incentivize them somehow. I just think we can be a little bit more strategic about it as best we can, otherwise, we're going to have big bobs.
About an economic, economic something.
Ox gym or something.
Kind of, Mr.? I think, uh, I agree with everything the deputy mayor said, and I'm certainly not a, opposed to.
Yeah.
I don't feel well, I have a headache. Um, now I lost my train of thought, thanks to the mayor.
Just keep, just keep agreeing with me.
I did say that I agreed with the deputy mayor, and, oh, it's coming back to me gradually, damn it. Anyway, um, and it's, it's somewhat tangential to what we've talked about, but a good example of what the deputy mayor is talking about, about, and I'm not opposed to poaching whatsoever either, is it has been my impression that as far as our business profile in this city is shaping up, we have a lot of medical services. And this is, like, here's where I'm stepping out a bit. A couple of weeks ago, actually, four or five weeks ago, I had the opportunity to have a, an hour-long interview with the, uh, commander of Madigan, and during that interview, Jason, he was saying exactly what you were saying, and the thought crossed my mind, and the city manager, and Mike knows this, that I've asked him to come here to talk to this body, because there is an opportunity for the city to say to Madigan, look, you've got services, we've got the wherewithal here, that if any of this comes over to the private sector, we are in a position to take that, and I think having a major medical center in the United States Army in our backyard gives us an advantage, and give, and it has, actually, as you were talking about opportunity, there's an opportunity to exploit. So, I mean, I, I, I look forward to that discussion with Kurt Bund, um, because I think, I mean, he's, it was almost eerie listening to you talk, which most of the time it is, but beside the point. But, I mean, he, you, and this is a man that's, he's not a doctor, he's not a nurse, he has a PhD in business. So let's pitch to Madigan, because again, that's a, that's a relationship I think we would do well to cultivate. Thank you.
That's an interesting area.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there, the Association of Defense Communities just had, I believe it was, they just had an article on the, uh, the
Is that transitory?
Pro, proposal to, uh, further civilianize military medical.
Exactly, yeah. And here we are.
We have some thoughts on that, so, what is, we have some thoughts on this discussion, and, uh, give us some opportunities to speak with some other developers, and let's see what happens.
Thank you.
And, the area close to the hospital is transit-oriented and in an opportunity zone.
Right, exactly. What was that gentleman doing aggregating, is he doing much over by the, uh?
Mr. Borman? In the Kendrick Street area? Yes, he's continuing to assemble property. Yeah, he wants to do a project long-term, up to ten acres, um, and he'll probably start with a smaller project.
He, he has been working very diligently for the last five years, in acquiring property, he's been successful. He's picked up a lot of derelict buildings.
What do you think the end game is for him, do you have any idea, have we talked to him a little bit about it?
We have, he would like to see us do more public nuisance abatements in his neighborhood to force property owners to sell, but I can't get into that.
Let's assume they got all that, what would be his dream sort of development, is he looking?
He would like, he would like to see T O C development, uh, along Kendrick, and tie it in with the, uh, this, uh, Lakewood Station. He would like to see mixed-use development, he has a proposed, uh, medium-sized apartment complex that he has some, uh, tentative designs on, he's just waiting to get all these properties lined up, and it is so difficult to deal with lot consolidation, because some people don't want to sell.
Well, you know, it's interesting, because then, obviously, following up on Mr. Simpson's comment, that's on, on the backside of St. Clair. It's a great opportunity there for some sort of a medical campus or something like that. You know, and the other thing I keep hearing from some of my compatriots in the development community is, we are ripe for some, I want to say high-quality, better-quality office complex, mixed-use office in the downtown core. We haven't had one in a long time, and it's a little bit of a, again, chicken and the egg thing, trying to get the demand sufficient to justify, uh, you can't do it on spec very much anymore, but we got to get, we got to start looking at some people and seeing what we can do there.
Well, we, we talked to Burke about that, when we looked at a marketing report from CBD, and at that point in time, the o, opportunity for office space didn't seem very good at that time, that was two years ago.
Well, and it may be changing, again, there's some things perking along that we can talk a little about. That Block C over by the QFC is becoming a little bit of attractive for potential folks to look at now, for redevelopment mixed-use office, so that might be a good spot for them.
Just to remind you, you are the one that has said if we build it, they'll come to it.
Yeah, exactly.
So I just, you know, you wanted an argument, there you go, just, there you go.
Well, they, there, there is some logic to that, there hasn't been a multi-story Class A office space built in Tacoma in the last twenty-five years.
Right.
Uh, the last two buildings were, were Russell and Columbia Bank, and, and so, and the, what, in, what inhibits relocation of a major entity is the fact that they want it now, they don't want to wait for somebody to, to permit and spend three years, four years building out Class A office space, so.
There's, there, I believe there's some multi-family tax exemption proposal for office space that the legislature's looking at.
Yeah, well, they're, they're trying it for Tacoma, I don't know why it's going to be, because they're kind of desperate. Remember they changed the language to have it for cities above sixty thousand, so a lot of places should capture Lakewood, I think, was the last iteration of that bill, so, anyway.
If they'll count everybody that's here.
Yeah.
This time.
Construction costs are the same, and, and leasing rates are lower here than the R C L.
Right, anything further? That's enough, good stuff, thank you, keep churning.
Thank you.
Now we move to a review of Wireless Service Facilities Code amendments and the two thousand nineteen Fee Schedule amendments to include provisions for small cell facility permits and pole use and attachment fees.
Thank you very much.
Always been mes, mesmerized by the perspective of, of pole fee.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, um, thank you for taking this up again this evening. I know we're, we're late, but hopefully this will be a relatively brief conversation since you discussed it last week. Tiffany Spear, Planning Manager for Special Projects, um, regarding Wireless Service Facilities and amendments to the Lakewood City Code to reflect changes because of the October eighteen FCC declaratory ruling. And again, Shannon Kelly-Fong is here with me this evening, she made that presentation to you last week. But what you have tonight in your packet is just, again, a brief summary of the ruling itself at pages seventy to seventy-one, and then following that, you have a draft ordinance, and then the language that would be adopted as an exhibit to that ordinance, updating, uh, Title eighteen A. be adopted as an exhibit to that ordinance updating Title 18A. What's a little bit complicating, uh, for those who are reading this packet is that everything in that, um, exhibit is underlined because this is actually renumbering much of the current language within 18A in anticipation of the big 18A update later this year. So, what I went ahead and did this evening for your benefit, uh, hopefully for your benefit, is that as you move through this, um, draft, you'll see parts of it that are highlighted. And those are the areas where the small cell wireless specific language is included. All of the rest of it is underlined, but again, that's because of renumbering rather than substantive change. So, um, as was discussed last week, this is really to deal with 5G. It's a new, um, way to deliver wireless services. It's a new type of equipment that's needing to be installed. And, um, the FCC and, and Congress has made it clear that this is something local government needs to comply with and cooperate with. And so, there's specific time limits for when, um, a department at a city or county can look at this and how long they have to look at it. There's conversations about how much can be charged for fees in order to do that and also for the licenses and the ability to work in the right of way. And then there's also discussion within the ruling about aesthetics and what can be required of, uh, an installer and a provider for how these things might look. Um, just to step back briefly, the macro, the big towers that you've seen now for 20 years plus, that's not what we're talking about anymore. The 5G equipment is much smaller and the way it seems to be getting, um, installed for the most part is applied to utility poles or streetlights. And they're small enough to where in, in theory, multiple ones of those could be put on a single pole. So, they're much smaller than what you've seen in the past, but they're much more, um, prevalent. There's gonna be a lot more of them because of their size and the, the way that they work. So, this is a different type of technology that's being installed within the city. We did this afternoon receive comments from Verizon. We did not have an opportunity to take a look at it as staff, but that is something that we will be doing over this next week. The way this is being presented to you is because the effective date of the FCC's ruling is actually today, January 14th. The council could take, uh, emergency action under RCWs in order to do interim controls and that could be done as early as next Monday. And then following that, you have six months to hold a hearing about what action you take on the 22nd. And so, as of right now, it's suggested, but you could certainly change this, but it's suggested that the public hearing would happen the following, or two weeks later, excuse me, on February 4th. So, if you were to take action, uh, next Monday night, it would be on interim controls. There would be a public hearing. And then moving forward into the year when the rest of 18A comes before you, this chapter, if it needs additional amendment at that point, we would bring those to you, but otherwise it would be just incorporated into the full 18A update when you were to take action on that. So, having just received the Verizon stuff, uh, today, what we'll do is take a look at that. If there is amendments needed because of those suggestions, uh, we'll provide that in the version of the ordinance that you would get for next Monday night. And then you would take action should you wish to, and then a hearing would follow.
Mr. Waylon.
So, where do we come up with the language of, uh, proposed 18A 95? Is this from other examples or created out of whole cloth?
The small cell language specifically was the result of looking at Olympia, Puyallup, and then there's some National League of Cities and the national, I'm gonna get the, it's Natoa, I think is the acronym, but there were several templates out there nationally that we could use. And then the rest of the chapter is what's currently in your 18A 85.
Right. All the 95 stuff is obviously kinda cold from other, hopefully good examples of standard practices.
Correct.
So, I don't know if it would go in the code, the franchise agreement for both. But as the entire community is picking up all sorts of things that blew down and blew over this last week, uh, is there any built-in liability for contributing to the downfall of a city-owned pole?
Actually, that's quite a bit of what, uh, Ms. Kelly Fong has been working on about, uh, within our Public Works and Planning Department, how are the reviews gonna be happening? What kind of engineering's going to be required? Because in the city of Lakewood, unlike many other cities, uh, the, the power and utility poles aren't necessarily owned by the city. They have, there's multiple utilities providing power within Lakewood and some, uh, are older poles, some are more recent poles with different design. So, the, the Public Works Department has some information about that, but it's clear that as time goes by, we need to figure out how much liability the city takes on by getting involved with those franchise agreements, if at all. But also taking a look at just public safety issues and questions about, does the city need to be aware of every single, uh, piece of equipment that gets installed on those non-city-owned poles because of safety concerns?
Yeah, so the, you know, the fir trees have certain degree of flexibility. Just modifying that by topping a tree in an urban area creates a sail and they fall down more readily. And most of these poles are, uh, don't have a lot of wind resistance. It seems like anytime you put something on them, you're creating a sail. And so, I don't know that that's been anticipated in the engineering standards. I'm just totally ignorant in that regard. But it is a, it is a concern that we're creating sails that are a public safety and potentially financial liability problem.
One of the things that we've become aware of is that, for instance, in the city of Stillicum or town of Stillicum, and then maybe elsewhere, there are, in addition to those that are working to install the equipment itself for the wireless transmissions, there's also, uh, companies that are working on providing additional buttressing, for lack of a better word, for these poles. So, there's a process by which to retrofit a pole potentially as well as install this equipment. Whether that would be required for some or all of the poles in Lakewood is unknown at this time. And so, if you have no other questions on the draft language, I'll just turn it over to, uh, to Ms. Kelly Fong to discuss the fees.
Mr. Simpson.
Just one question on the proposed, on the changes to the language, the additions you've made highlighted in yellow. Has there been, and, and maybe our guests would like to weigh in on this as well, has there been any blowback from the industry on, on, on municipalities that already have this language? In other words, yeah, go ahead, ma'am. Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm just, I just wanna know, I think this is good. I just wanna be clear that the language we called, uh, is, is gonna work.
I'm Ilah Baga, I'm a Verizon journalist. And, uh, we did just, I apologize, we're usually getting engaged a little earlier in the process in our local communities, but, um, this one kinda snuck the phone a little bit because of this year number code being passed right now after the amendments. So, we did just have the opportunity to review the code today. Similar codes are being passed throughout the state and, uh, there are some technical concerns in this code that we feel might get in the way of some deployment activities. And that's really what's behind our red line is to try to help the city of Lakewood be both more consistent with the federal order, uh, but also really our focus is on the logistics of building, uh, making sure that we can actually build these effectively. And structural engineering is taken into account on every pole, including wind loading and, and sail loading. I think this code, uh, borrows a lot of parts from, from various different codes and in that, um, there are some aspects of, for example, National Electric Safety Code that are not taken into account in terms of poles remaining climbable, um, really technical details, which is why we like to provide red lines where we can so that those technical details can be taken into account. And, um, I don't know if it makes more sense to go over that now. I certainly wouldn't wanna kick staff off guard before they've had a chance to review. But it, I'm, I am happy to provide any more detail that you'd like on that either today or to future meeting.
General synopsis. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry? Yes, yes.
Ms. Kelly Fong?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. If the draft interim small cell controls are adopted at the January 22nd meeting, it's also recommended that the city council amend the 2019 master fee schedule on the same date to include the following. One, an interim small cell facility permit of a hundred dollar per small cell facility plus any time and materials beyond the base amount. A interim annual right-of-way access and pole attachment fee of $270 plus any time and material beyond the base amount. And purple. And a interim new pole for small cell facility attachment fee of a thousand dollars per pole plus time and materials beyond this base amount. These are, again, the FCC safe harbor amounts that were identified in the FCC declaratory ruling. Additionally, it's also recommended that the small cell, uh, franchise deposit fee be reduced to a sum of $5,000. It's currently set at $11,000. The reduction is due to the franchise would no longer be needed for review of design standards. Again, any city time and resource used beyond this amount would be charged to the applicant at the applicable rate. Any unused funds would be returned to the applicant once the franchise was processed. In the future, the Community and Economic Development Department is proposing to audit their fee structure. So, one thing that I just wanted to really drive home tonight is that this is a highly evolving issue. A lot of, uh, citing authorities are reacting to this and I'm assuming that, um, reactions will be changing here in the next couple of months, so the city will continue to monitor this. Given that it is an evolving issue, over the next few months, the city will likely be revisiting this topic and its associated processes. Currently, the city's draft process is shown in Attachment B of my memo, which is on page 114. It's a flow chart which exhibits, um, our interim review process. This was as of last week. It has already been tweaked slightly as of today and it will continue to be tweaked, um, as we continue on with this process. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Kelly Fong?
Thank you.
Mr. Bransdatter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, we moved on to fees before I was dealing with the, the proposed ordinance for the 22nd. And I, I had a question because in section six of the ordinance, it says, this ordinance in the, in the moratorium provided for herein shall be in full force and effect upon passage and signatures hereon. And that's the only place that moratorium appears in the ordinance. And so, what are we actually putting a mor-, I understand the controls are interim, but it, it's, they're, they're sort of permissive controls that, that set rules so you can do things. I'm not really clear what moratorium we're enacting or that this refers to.
And that's simply a typographical error, so that, that will not be there next Monday night. It's, this is an ordinance that is adopting, uh, Chapter 18A 95, which would go into effect on, upon, um, adoption.
Okay. And then there was a section in it that said, the rule, interim rules that we enact will be effective everywhere in the city except on the Chambers Creek properties. Where it speaks to the fact that the University Place gets to set the rules on the Chambers Creek properties?
I'm sorry, that's not ringing a bell. Do you know where that is?
It's under exceptions.
There's a Chambers Creek, Chambers Creek Properties master plan. It's an inter-local agreement between Pierce County, University Place
It has small cell rules?
And Lakewood. It cedes the development authority to the University Place, to University Place because Lakewood has only na- natural area within the Chambers Creek properties.
And I believe council member Bransdatter, you're talking about subsection H on page 78, and that is language that's in the current 18A 85. That's not a new, uh, subsection.
So, so that's something that doesn't particularly pertain to small cells, it's just underlined because it's a number change?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Go forth and prosper.
Thank you.
Now move to reports by the city manager. Mr. Caulfield.
Yeah, it's strange. A little bit is in Lakewood. Most of it's in University Place, properties owned by Pierce County. The development authority is University Place.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. First, I'd like to get back on the salary commission question. We, uh, looked at, looked that up online. And so, the word that's used throughout that part of the code is shall. So, the mayor shall, every four years, appoint a salary commission. The council shall, um, what's the word? Apply, not, um, confirm, confirm the mayor's appointees. And then the salary commission shall undertake, uh, a review of the city council's, um, salaries and can either increase or decrease them.
And she'll make a recommendation?
No, they act on their own. It shall go into effect, yeah. Cause again, you set up a salary commission to do that for you as opposed to you as a body undertaking that. So, you have those two options under, under state law. And then if the salary commission, if the recommendation is to increase your salaries, then they go into effect the very next payroll period. However, if there's a decrease, then it goes into effect, um, at the next, after the, after that particular, after those positions, um, come up for reelection. So, they would go into effect on
It doesn't decrease during a term of office.
Correct. So, yeah, that's correct. That's correct, Mayor. Also, um, uh, there's a timeline. So, um, so once the initiative, once, um, the city council kicks it off, there's 45 days to select, appoint and confirm the commission. And the commission has 45 days to do their work. However, if the commission needs more time, they can come back to this body and, and, and request it. And so, since that's in the code, um, I think as I pointed out earlier, we had planned on bringing that back to initiate that process.
So, it's a 90-day process?
90-day process, that's correct, Mayor.
And when does it need to be completed by?
Well, it would be within those 90 days. So, if we kicked it off, for example
I mean, it, it has to be within the calendar year?
Yes.
When's, when's the drop dead date?
Yeah, it would have to be done within, well, if you were to initiate it in, for example, June 1st or May 1st, then within 90 days of that.
But I mean, we would be out of compliance if we initiated it, it, the process of December 15th.
That's, I understand that, I would, that's how I would read that, Mayor. Yes, yes, yes. And then if for some reason you didn't wanna undertake this process at all, then you would need to remove that from the code, from the code.
It is mandatory and we set it up that way to remove discretion, I think.
A coup-, a coup-, a few things I'd like to report on. Western State Hospital, uh, they came back and bent with our team a second time last week. They, uh, reaffirmed their desire to build a new Western State Hospital. One of the questions was, since we had them, we asked them, hey, are you looking at any alternative sites? They responded that they were. They're looking at, uh, the current campus, um, over the Oakbrook neighborhood as well as a site in Buckley. We presume that it's the former Rainier School that's out there. They did say that, that, uh, the Lakewood site is, um, is their leading. That's the number one site that they're looking at. They then asked us, uh, to go and look at, you know, their proposal as drafted. Wanna be clear that, um, they have not made an application or anything. This is all conceptual on their end at this point in time. And, uh, but they did ask us, they says, you know, could you take a look at it and provide us any feedback or comments? And so, we're going to do that. Probably take us two or three weeks to, to pull all of that together. I can tell you right off the top of my head that there are some concerns with what they're proposing. Number one, from a land use standpoint, they have not verified or confirmed that they can actually even build it on that property since the underlying zoning is, uh, open space and recreation. There are also a number of environmental issues, given the fact, for example, that they wanna build a road east-west that would connect Sentinel to 87th. So, essentially not coming in off of Stillicum Boulevard, which is a principal arterial, but ingress and egress and, uh, essentially in, in front of Stillicum High School as well as onto 87th, which is a primarily a collector residential roadway and not, not set up to, to handle that on both ends. Also, uh, you know, right through a environmentally critical area where they wanna build this road and then just where they wanna build the new hospital, it's adjacent to Chambers Creek and the, you know, the mouth of the, uh, Puget Sound. So, um, they got those issues to deal with, will be addressing. They also have infrastructure and utility issues, for example, water issues. I mean, they've been talking to us about that for a good number of years, as well as power issues, um, in terms of, uh, the load that they would need from an electrical standpoint. So, we're, since they asked So, we're, since they asked, since they asked, uh, we're going to do our due diligence. Um, I know right now what I've been putting out on the table are maybe the not-so positives, but there could be some positive aspects of this as well. And if they are, we will communicate, communicate that to them. Um, I think um one of the things that, you know, we will be communicating to them is since you have identified alternative sites, you know, they should pursue those with equal vigor um and not just focus in on the Lakewood site given what we preliminary have identified as some concerns there. So, so more to follow on that. We'll certainly keep the council appraised. Um, along those lines, since uh the Fort Silicon Golf Course is now closed and the mayor and I were talking last week about this, I, I think this body should consider rezoning that property from open space and recreation two, which is a higher use and more of an active use, to open space and recreation one. And there's two reasons for that. Uh, the first is that the golf course has been closed. Um, and then number two, essentially marrying it up with uh the underlying zoning of Fort Silicon Park, which is OSR one. And um, we would like to bring that forward and have a, have a discussion with you at um your February fourth uh regular meeting under reports by the city manager. And if this body is so inclined, we would ask that um you uh adopt a resolution authorizing us to move forward with that here in the uh February, March, April, April twen- timeframe.
How does that fit with the current comp plan amendments? How does that snake in?
It's separate because it's a zoning, it's a zoning code issue, Deputy Mayor. Um, also, my understanding is that it would be quasi judicial, so that part of the code needs to be updated first because it's site-specific. Since it's site-specific. But it's not a comp plan amendment, it's a underlying zoning code issue. So.
So the decision when you enact proposed new rule, quasi judicial type action, this would become a primarily a hearing examiner decision and then we would only get involved with hearing examiner decision with appeals?
My understa- I, let me get back to you on that, um, councilmember. Um, my understanding is that it would, it would come to this, it would come to this body. Let us get back to that.
Part of the question was, can the city appeal with their examiner suit?
Uh, yes. I'm sure we can, yes.
I know more to follow on all of this, but just thinking out loud, assuming we did change to OSR one and the hospital came through with a master plan that said, gee, we're going to come to the city with a comp plan amendment to change that from OSR one to something else.
Public institution is what they would have to do.
Yeah, right.
That's a separate process. That's on them.
Yeah, they just have to go through the process.
They would. And as soon as they would be able to do that, Deputy Mayor, it would be twenty-twenty.
And it may be, something like that may be conditioned on replacing the open space.
Certainly, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all.
The rest of it becomes open space. Go build over there. Bring the open space to the city.
And turn it over to the city of Lakewood.
Yeah, along with the historic cluster, so we can incorporate that in.
One of the things that they have pointed out is that the, the two newer buildings that they, that were built, um, they're valued about seventy million dollars. They plan on keeping those and using those for something else. Probably, you know, they got the child treatment center. So even if the hospital, that's on the, um, that's on the, actually the south side, um, because I think north is.
South still.
It's, it's in the area closer to Albertson's. How about that? It's the area closer to Albertson's. So the, um, but they would still have a footprint out there. Um, so it, you know, the hospital would, you know, you know, the, the, the major components would go away. But one of the things that we have also pointed out to them, and again, because they asked, is if they were to build a new hospital, what's the city's expectation with, um, other than those two newer buildings? What's the city's expectations, for example, with their headquarters building all the way down to Silicon? And our responses pursuant to state law, those are old buildings. They need to be demolished. They said, yeah, thank you, okay. So, because right now, what they plan on doing, if this was to move forward, is they plan on putting a big fence around it. So that's what they communicated. Again, this is all very preliminary. These are just, you know, folks that we've been meeting with, architects and kind of their mid-level folks. So, so again, more to follow. Yeah, so. But since they asked us, we are going to provide them feedback.
Plenty of bricks for Memorial Walkways.
What is it with Lakewood and bricks? I, I just. Um, I think we're all aware that the federal government has been shut down, or maybe you're not.
Hasn't made any difference.
Hasn't had an impact. Um, our Congressman Denny Heck, um-
Has he paid his rent?
Actually, we signed it. Yes, he has. He's covered. He's a, he's an outstanding tenant, by the way. So, Con- Congressman, you know, it, it, we're on your time right now, so I just want, I just want to say. Uh, Congressman Heck is going to be facilitating a phone con- phone conference uh for mayors and city managers in the tenth district tomorrow and wanting to know, you know, what kind of an impact that it's having on our community. And I did send an email to the council earlier today. Uh, but long story short, it does have an impact on our ability to manage certain grants. For example, our DB grant, um, Veterans Court, our Bureau of Justice Assistant grant, and you know, the list goes on. There's also a concern on the vouchers that both the Tacoma Housing Authority and the Pierce County Housing Authority utilize at, at the end of February. A lot of uncertainty. Do they continue to get money or, you know, what, what happens there? And then we're getting mixed messages from HUD as it relates to our CDVG and, and home funding. So again, uncertainty. Uh, the good news is that our federally funded transportation projects, those are still kind of in design phase right now. You know, a lot of them have closed out, but as we look out until later on in the year, if this was to continue, that potentially would, would have an impact. So we'll be communicating that to Mr. Heck um and his, his team tomorrow. Um, speaking of grants, something I want to give you a courtesy heads up on, and Mr. Buwer and I are going to be talking about this later this week. Uh, the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department has let us know that they've applied for a federal grant uh to study quote-unquote "activity-friendly built environments." And uh basically, they want to take a look at um, then uh the smart, um, give me a second here, I'll find it. Our complete streets, not just that we already, it's in our code, that Lakewood has, but also Pierce County and the city of Tacoma. And uh, I guess, provide recommendations for updates and changes and things along those lines. That's kind of what I know right now. Um, I think they're asking us for our support. Um, I think once I know more on this, I think I'll be back in front of this body to see if this is something that you want to support. I don't know at this point in time what impact that will have on, you know, our staff. We're, we're busy. You heard from Mr. Buwer a little bit ago, we're very, very busy. And uh, so, but more importantly, I'm not quite sure why they're, they're the health department. Um, I would prefer that they focus on septic systems because that's an area we have some concerns. So if maybe they could take those resources and deal with that. But um, as we learn more on this, I'll, I'll report back to you. But um, before I just sign off on, yes, we support it, I'll be back in front of you.
So this is, they want to know about planning, essentially. Correct?
Say again, Mayor?
They're, this, they want to know about planning processes.
I would say that they want to get involved in planning processes.
Okay. And do you know the source of funding for that involvement?
All, all we know, Mayor, is that it's um, it's a, it's a federal grant. That's all we know. That they've applied for.
Pardon?
That they've applied for.
That they've applied for.
That's the way it's been communicated to us. I don't know if they've received it yet. I think what they're asking us right now is that they're asking for our support on getting the money. If they're getting the money, that they're, they're gonna do these things in our community and look at our code and make recommendations.
I think it should formally come before a council before any acclamation.
I plan on doing that, Mayor.
What?
I plan on doing that, to this body.
Because I don't, I don't know if their funders have approved of that. I know half, half of their funders haven't.
The Gravely Lake Drive and one-twelfth project, you know, the, the curve there. So, um, our crews, we're going to do that in-house as opposed to contracting that out. And we're going to try and actually break ground on the latter part of February and hopefully get it done sometime in March. It's a relatively straightforward project, and so we think we can do it ourselves. Um, it'll probably save us a few thousand bucks. Um, but Gravely Lake and, and one-twelfth, the curve, where we're going to put up the, the trees and the rocks and everything to prevent cars from going into the condominium complex.
Oh, yeah, yeah. What are we doing with that? Put a bank racing track?
Uh, we provided, council, you would, you provided us direction to move forward with um some improvements last, last fall.
Oh, not the guardrail thing, the rock?
Yeah, yeah, more of a beautification.
Sounds like the Addams Family.
We also, uh, uh, the sheriff's department um did communicate to us that they are willing to provide us SWAT services for those one or two incidents that we have a year. Um, we have the option to either pay forty-two cents per capita or on a incident basis. Um, assuming we have two a year, it's about the same. So we're going to look internally to see what we want to recommend to this, and we'll bring both options forward to the council. Um, but want to thank the, the sheriff for, um, for offering this service to us. And so, um, so more, more to follow on that, hopefully here in the near future. Um, the Nisqually tribal grants, if you recall, we applied for four. Um, we received three letters last week saying that they did not award us funding in support of our behavioral health contact team, the Colonial Plaza project, or the Fort Silicon Park feasibility study. However, they encouraged us to apply again this year, and we will certainly do this. Um, we're not sure, we think we might have received funding in support of the emergency assistance to the low-income tenants that are displaced because of a number of reasons here in town. Um, and, uh, but we're, we're trying to verify with, verify on that. I think you've probably heard me say, uh, retail is dead or is dying. It's uh really what's driving economic activity you just heard here in, in Lakewood is, you know, housing, industry, healthcare, professional services, things along those lines. Um, actually restaurants and entertainment as, 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 as well. Mon Big, um, I was talking to him on, on, on Friday, and he's looking to bring in another um retailer over into uh his complex where he has Starbucks as a, as, as an anchor. One of the things I did ask him is I, I expressed uh my, my frustration with some commercial property owners who don't seem to be able to bring in retailers or tenants of any, any kind. And I asked him his advice, and he said, you know, we're out there, actually what you said earlier, and uh out there calling them and talking with them. And uh, and he said, you know, and he actually said, you know, and John, you're doing that on your end as well. Um, and uh, he said, but there are some commercial property owners, they just sit on their heels. And uh, so then um I, um, I suggested that maybe he step in and buy those properties, and he said he would consider that. So. Um, he is, he's actually fantastic to work with. I don't know if any of you have ever met him, but he is, he's, he's, he's fantastic to work with. And he, he's, he's very helpful to the city and he's very helpful to our economic development team um on issues that don't even, where he doesn't get any gain, but he's just been a great resource to us. Um, and speaking of that, um, Pier One Imports is, uh, looks like it's going to be closing, uh, looks like they're closing about twenty-five or thirty of their stores nationwide. Earnings not doing too well. Um, back to Western State Hospital. Um, well, hopefully it's an opportunity for RPA to bring something else in there or do something. Western State Hospital, um, our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, has been coordinating with them to try and identify a date and time for any of you folks who might be interested to do a tour. So we've suggested like a Friday morning, um, you know, and so we'll keep, we'll keep you posted on that. So we're waiting to hear, hear, hear back from them. Um, and then from a calendar standpoint, uh, I think that just the big item is um the fifteenth annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Celebration this, this Saturday morning. And just a friendly reminder, we would ask you to be there no later than nine forty-five so you can get up and you'll all be introduced as you, as, 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 as the ceremony, as the ceremony kicks off. I think is, um, actually, I, I think we placed on your table Lakeview Light and Powers having their annual meeting on March thirteenth, and so you get to have somebody to come vote. I know in the past it's been Councilmember Bransdatter. So you all might want to determine who, who to do that. It's a good showing. It's a good showing.
They have food? One customer, one vote.
That's right. So the city gets one vote as a customer. Um, and it'll be held, held here again this year. It'll be held at the council chamber. It's, well, it's just like running for council. You gotta be, there's a process, so. Actually, yeah, it's commercial, commercial, you actually have to live and you have to have a residence, like a city councilor.
The system is designed so that commercial customers are overwhelmed and can be charged a higher rate. A residential. And, and you, there's, and there's no allocation based on assessed value or volume of service so that the residential customers can say, we want to keep our rates low and charge you a lot.
You actually get one vote per meeting.
Then, then the Lakewood Industrial Park would, uh, would run it. Yeah. Uh, on to uh the legislative update, and um I'm going to forward um some information that our, our, our government relations team pulled together and sent over to us. So um they convened their hundred-and-five day session earlier today. Key date, February twenty-second. That's a primarily bill cutoff other than those that are related to budget, budget and finance, so February twenty-second. So between now and February twenty-second, there'll be thou- probably several thousand bills are going to be introduced. So we need to recognize that not all of them are going to move, move, move forward. So there are, obviously, there are some that we're going to be for and then probably a good number that we're going to be against. We're hearing from AWC, there's probably going to be a number of land use bills introduced to try and preempt local, local authority on a number of funds. So we just need to be, be cognitive of that. Um, one of the more interesting ones, I just, before I forget, point out, pointed out, is that there's a bipartisan bill being introduced to um maintain daylight savings, so stay on daylight savings time rather than going back and forth every, um, every fall and spring. So we'll see what happens. I understand in California, the voters voted to do away with that. And I think, uh, my understanding is Congress actually has to, has to, has to bless that. It's also my understanding that the Washington State bill is being introduced, and Oregon is doing something similar. So the whole west coast would do away with. Yeah, so. Good news is our community policing partnership ask is in there. The governor did include that in there. Also, if you recall, that we have a number of um park and rec grants through WWRPA as well as ALIA. And the funding that is proposed in the governor's budget, even though it's not commensurate with what um the park and rec folks would like, they would like more, for Lakewood, three, we're, we're, we're looking pretty good uh in terms of, thank you, Heidi. Um, in terms of um Fort Silicon Park, uh, rather, I'm sorry, Harry Todd Park and Fort Silicon Park. And um I'll send you some more detail on that, but we're, we're looking really, really good there. Um, and then we're in the process of completing the capital budget requests for um Fort Silicon Park, for the Turf and Fields as well as uh Spring Brook Park. So that's, that's moving along. And we have um, um, very strong support from our twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth delegation on that. Um, also, the military benefit zone has been expanded to include all military communities, and so that's a good thing. So now we have more people. Um, also, uh, I just reviewed the bill right before this meeting, and um so there's been a request, um, I think from state legislatures to not just include it as sales tax, but also property tax. And the reason that that's important is because that helps mixed-use projects on the housing side. So, um, so that's a, so that's a good thing. So the bill has actually expanded. So it's a, again, um, a, a, a positive. You know, again, there's a number of, of, of bills moving forward. A lot of housing bills, housing affordability bills are expected to be introduced. Um, one of the things that the legislature is going to consider are a couple of initiatives. One is initiative nine seventy-six, which is Mr. Iman's newest one to go to thirty-dollar tabs. That would have an imp- negative impact from a financial perspective. I'm not saying from a policy standpoint. I'll let that up to all of you folks, but from a financial standpoint, has a negative impact to both sound transit and city transportation benefit districts, of which we, we, we have one. So essentially, that funding source would go away if that initiative is either approved by the state legislature or put forward to the- approved by the state legislature, or put forward to the voters in this coming, coming November. A new initiative, which quite frankly, I wasn't even aware of, is called Initiative one thousand, since, you know, actually, I remember, you know, Initiative two hundred and three hundred and four hundred and six hundred, now, now we're into the thousands. And that would allow the state to remedy documented or proven discrimination against or under representation of certain disadvantaged groups. It would allow the state to implement affirmative action in public education, employment, and contracting, if the action does not use quotas or preferential treatment. It would define affirmative action and preferential treatment. The measure would establish a governor's commission on diversity, equity, inclusion, and require the commission to draft implementing legislation and public published reports. The governor has asked the state legislature to directly enact I-1000 early on in, in the session. So I was not aware of that, that just came up.
It's essentially a repeal of I-200.
Okay, it's a repeal of I-200, okay.
And so I-200 says that you can't have, you can't have any preferential treatment based on race, et cetera.
Yeah.
And this says you can't.
And then Initiative nine forty, which deals with police, there is a bipartisan bill to essentially, essentially implement what was agreed to last session, which was ultimately found to have been, I think the state Supreme Court had some concerns with that. But long story short, it looks like the state legislature will go back to what they had agreed upon during the last session, which would, I guess, for lack of a better term, kind of watered down I-940. But again, it was, it's been agreed upon by the law enforcement community, as well as those that are trying to seek some balance in terms of how police officers are held accountable for, you know, shootings and things, things along those lines. And we signed in support of that earlier today on that. But again, you know, there's, there's some good stuff moving forward, so I, I, I won't belay you with that. But again, as I think as the council's aware, we are very, very proactive down there in monitoring what's going on, and called to testify in a number of things, so we'll continue to do that. And then I know Councilmember Simpson would like to bring up, adding to our legislative policy manual, you know, the issue if, if a proposed single-use plastic bags ordinance comes about. I just need some direction from the council on that. If that's something that you're, you're interested in, in, in supporting, my recommendation would be to just give me direction tonight that you would like that added to the legislative policy manual, that would be the best place to put it. And then we can bring that forward for your consideration and action at next week's meeting, and it'll be good to go. The other way to do it is for me to bring back those bills as they come about. I would suggest not doing that, but rather go with the process that I just suggested. The reason being is because, again, these bills are gonna come about very, very quickly, and there's just not gonna be time for you folks to, you know, take action on that, you know, even, even though you're meeting every Monday. So I will, I will leave it at that. So that's my report, Mayor.
Mr. Simpson?
Well, if you're looking for direction on that last agenda item, I would support the former. It, if I understand the process correctly, it no way, shape, or form binds us to anything. It just makes sure that it's part of our policy directive.
We have a voice.
We have a voice. What we do with what comes out of that process still remains up to us, if I understand correctly.
The bill.
It, that is exactly right. Because there are certain things about when we start to get into this, that quite frankly, I would not favor. Like penalizing businesses five to ten cents to pay for a paper bag. That isn't my intent, and I would not be in favor of that.
Sorry, you're back.
There you go. And it's a relatively big one, too.
He doesn't want to be boss.
I don't want to be, and I don't want to be shipped out either. But, so the point is, is, but I think we would be, I would like us to consider, coming to a consensus to direct the city manager that we add this to our policy manual to the state legislature.
So we need to place that on the agenda, to consider whether we want to add, make an addition to our policy.
That's correct, Mayor. In between now and next Monday, or the end of this week, we'll develop some language. And, and if it's okay, I, I would suggest.
Is there any to?
It would be broad. It would be broad language. It would be broad language to basically state that this body supports legislation to address, you know, the proliferation of plastic bags or something.
Put on for consideration. We'll talk about it then. All right. Any other questions from the city manager? Mr. Branstadter?
Ms. Caulfield, have we resolved our difficulty with the direct deposit of our employees' paychecks?
Yes, yes, we have, councilmember. And still, still waiting to hear back from, from, from Eden on that. And so apparently, it was some kind of a programming issue on, on their end.
Right, thank you.
Actually, if I could just add, our, our chief financial officer, Todd Kraus, she, she is not happy. And, and it's not very delightful to be around, it's a city attorney term, when she's not happy. So, but yes, she has resolved it.
Right. Council comments, and Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just briefly say that I had the opportunity to attend the memorial service on Saturday for Deanna Roberts. It was very tastefully done, and the legacy that she's left behind is to be remembered. She's did a lot of stuff in her life. So, thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Lake City meeting the other night, and the council of Branstadter made mention of a couple of things that they talked about. One was, they also asked about getting their name on one of the neighborhood signs that would be going up on the gateway signs, Lake City Neighborhood. It's specific, I, I don't know that they were specifically hoping, the one we threw out was the, about one hundred.
Well, they're.
But there's another sign that was actually going to go in, worth forward, I guess. So I, I just throwing that out there. It, it was mentioned, I mean, it was Mike sent out an email. I, uh, one of the things that the firemen there, I can never remember his name, talked about was, you know, the, the fire guys have come here and talked about all their free, do that grant, free smoke detectors. And, and he's saying that at least initially, they've seen less calls into those neighborhoods that are receiving the smoke detectors. So, you know, the only time we tell, if it's interesting, if you could save us, you know, or if I want a twenty percent reduction. PCRC meeting on Thursday, I, I need a sub.
I'm going.
Because I, I think I'm at a meeting that is gonna go, what is it, not till seven? Or is it six?
It's always six.
It's six.
It's six. That'll be too early for me. I don't, I don't think I'll be done by six.
I'll touch base with you if I can make it.
It is a big meeting, because apparently on the agenda, they have, you know, in every, every meeting at the PCRC has to be about Buckley. And, and, you know, which is my major gripe.
Called the tail wagon the dog.
Right. Tail wag the dog, Buckley, and, so the plan here is Gig Harbor is giving up UGA on the east side of Gig Harbor. They feel is rural, and they're saying we're never gonna develop, we're never gonna bring services over to the other side of the harbor. So they're taking out two hundred and thirty acres. Buckley wants to expand by a hundred and fifty-six yard parcels and seven hundred and twenty acres all over the place, kind of west and south of town and all these other little things.
To be square.
The Pierce County staff said, hold the phone and came back with another matter, thing, which I haven't seen in Buckley, wrote a letter today, that said, well, if that's what they want, we're, we're against it. So I'm sure it will be spirited debate at, because of course, I think people will follow, I think, Buckley. So it'll be interesting to see what will happen. I would say we should close it. It's, really is against the growth manager and that. The, the council, the Pierce County staff sites in here will just a little look at tonight, that, you know, they've already been told seventy-five times, at least, by the growth manager here, where you have too much UGA, you've got, your UGA and urban growth boundaries too big. And now Buckley is saying, well, I think, ARL probably turned into MSF. And so I don't even know if this thing is the Seattle, if it survives. And, and it certainly isn't worth the heartache. So, first, I had it.
But can we put in a provide, though, that says we agree with Buckley if they agree to take that in Western State Hospital?
Agreed. That would be a great, there we go.
That's, that, that's the.
I tried to send.
Expansion for a public facilities district.
I got a two of them, and one was the short one.
Just two hundred acres for a public facilities district, you got it.
Tried it twice.
And the one, she might actually take that.
Yeah.
The first one would provide employment for them.
That's a bad idea. And then, then when they come back after they build it, now we need more housing. So she could do it again.
To Leila or to Eadham.
To Holly.
Holly.
That's gonna go to Bonnie Lake, which, that's Bonnie Lake.
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Branstadter?
The only thing I guess that I would, that I would mention is that I'm still open to collecting any contribution for district scholarship.
When do those due?
What?
When do they do, the monies?
Well, I'd like to get it to the Lions Club by sometime in February. We're gonna be selecting our nominee shortly after that. They would, they would, they would combine it with their money and be able to present scholarship expeditions there.
That's a good number, I would do.
Ms. Worth?
I'm good, sir.
Ms. Waylon?
Just reiterating what Ms. Moss said about the Thornwood event for Deanna Robinson, I thought it was well done. And Mayor and I and Mary attended on behalf of the city, as did Mr. Buwer, so she was a delightful person who did a lot of good stuff for Lakewood. Appreciate her very much. PCRC, I'll be there. And the last thing, I was at the Clover Park School District presentation tonight. Decent meeting, they look forward to meeting with us on the joint meeting on the twenty-eighth of January. And we gelled together more concepts for CELT, which will be presented at that time. So it was a good meeting we had last Tuesday, and there are things forming, which will be the proposal to the district and the community about supporting students, reinforcing great things for parents of students, and providing, you know, good opportunities to have kumbaya down the road. So more to follow on that. It was a good meeting.
So a little less kumbaya and more practical. Remember, the Clover Park School District is taking public input on their superintendent selection process, which is, of course, the most important thing a school board does, is select a superintendent. And that is this week. There are a variety of opportunities that they've published, and I, I'm gonna try to attend one session.
Sorry to interject, Mayor, but I haven't been able to get a response on this. Do you know if those listening sessions are, like, my understanding is that they were supposed to be one-on-ones, but it sounds like they're groups?
No, there's.
Anybody shows up?
There was one that came out.
Because there's one tomorrow at noon that I plan on going to.
I filled out sort of, yeah, there was some that were targeted to some community leaders. I don't know if that.
Well, I think, the group sessions, I think, community leaders was a euphemism for a lot of different people.
Got it.
Okay. Well, I plan on going tomorrow at noon.
So, that's item number one. Item number two is, I hold in my hand something I saw tonight. Have you seen it? The US Marshal Service sent a highly complimentary letter regarding Chief Zaro and his work with the partnership for a task force here that is, was selected for a US Marshal Service Director's honorary award for distinguished task force group, and his leadership in that. They're appreciative of their partnership with the Lakewood Police Department, and evidently, his task force arrested eight hundred and seventy-one violent offenders in the Western District of Washington. And including the group, including Lakewood PD, cleared over a thousand felony warrants during fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. So, Mr. City Manager, I think it would be appropriate to have Chief Zaro here at a regular session to read this and acknowledge it publicly. Had coffee with the mayor, with the mayor Tuesday. Sally Martinez presented on events. When you stack all the events back to back, i- is quite impressive. There's something going on all the time, and they're getting bigger and better all the time. It was.
Good quality of life.
It was good qual, good quality of life. And, and that was particularly well-received. And also, I can confirm that the two grants for acquisition of the homes adjacent to Spring Brook Park made their way to the city, or the county executive's desk today for signature.
Yeah.
So.
The chair is?
What?
The chair?
No, finance does that.
We have.
Yeah. They're signing off the contract. Because they're restrictive, they, they come with restrictive covenants. And so it's a real estate document, I guess.
So the meetings are tomorrow at eight AM at the Lakeview Hope Academy Library, thirty-seven. And tomorrow at noon at the Student Services Center Room Four. And tomorrow at nine AM at six PM, Student Services Room Four.
Around nine, six?
Wednesday night at six at the Student Services Center. Thursday night at six at the Hope Place, Hope Year Hall.
So eight is Hope Academy, and six tomorrow is at the Student Services Center.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
I might go to the one in the yard. Yeah, I was. Anything further? No word, sir?